Thanks for letting me call in.
Great, thank you for participating. All right, so next is approval of our agenda which was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you Nancy. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt is absent. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Swigard votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got an approved agenda. All right, so we're going to move directly to public participation. So, just out of curiosity, show of hands, how many in the audience, this is your first board meeting that you've actually physically attended? Wow, that's fantastic. So, a number of you may be here to speak, so I just wanted to explain this a little bit. So I'm going to read a board policy that talks about how public participation works, but just want to emphasize what we try to do here is create a nice neutral favorable environment for individuals who are coming to speak, and so we want to be respectful of all of our speakers. Here is Board Policy 187 announcement. We have come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Now actually, I'm going to pause here for a second because we have, at least by my count, 20, 20 participant comment cards, and everyone's going to be entitled to three minutes to speak, but Board Policy 187 only normally provides for 30 minutes of time for this whole segment, but the time period may be extended by a simple majority vote of the board. So I would move that we extend the public participation time for these 20 speakers. Would there be a second?
Second.
Ms. Donaldson's got that one. Motion and second to extend public participation time for these 20 speakers. Any final discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Swigard votes yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt is absent. Great, so we've extended the time, and I'll resume Board Policy 187. Here we go. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and will be given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name in relation to the district, and this information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these processes as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So I'm now going to invite participants forward to speak. You'll see we've put up a three-minute visible timer for you. At the end of the three minutes, there will be a bell that sounds so that you know when the three minutes are up, and given the number of participants, what I'll do is I'll alert speakers as to who's up and then who's on deck, so that you know who's next. And again, to help ensure that everyone is heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, please abstain from conversation, from comment, or applause during or after any of the public participation comments. All right, so with that, I invite forward our first speaker, Cameron Merkel, and on deck is Marietta Bailey. While Mr. Merkel comes forward to the podium, I in advance will apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name, but I will do my best. Mr. Merkel, welcome, and the next, oh, you're, if you could just please state your name and your relation to the district.
Cameron Merkel, and I'm a student at West Bend West.
Great, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Thank you. All right, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I know people are here on several topics, but I want to focus on two. First thing I have for you is my opinion regarding the discussion item Policy 381. I firmly believe that all political flags should be banned. Is it necessary to have them in schools? One of the definitions of the word "political" is this, quote, "motivated or caused by a person's beliefs or actions concerning politics," end quote. That was taken from the Oxford Dictionary. We have the American flag in school, not only because of state law, but it's to show support for our country, not to push some political belief. I will not tell you what flags I deem political; that is up to the board to decide. But weigh the benefits of having them in school. What are they? If people see these flags in school, they could spark argumentative conversations. We shouldn't be giving students more opportunities or material to argue about. Majority of political flags would be considered to be controversial issues which, unless being taught, do not need to be displayed. My second issue is about our facilities. Last meeting, I virtually watched the presentation that was presented to the board. One of the main issues that caught my eye was the chart that listed our district's buildings in certain categories relating to the level of work that was needed. West Bend High School was put into the critical category along with two of our elementary schools, which I believe was Decor and Fair Park. When I hear the word "critical," it brings many questions to my mind. It reminds me of when our classrooms were in the low 50s regarding the temperature. The board needs to work diligently to assure teachers and students that this will not happen again. There needs to be a big solution soon. I do not believe that we can keep putting money into certain maintenance that is going to fail time and time again. I do not like to hear the word referendum, but I believe there is no other way. I have stated repeatedly that the task force provided solutions without the need for referendum, but now our budget is clearly different. The community has been looking to the board for solutions on these building issues long enough. Make a plan and execute it. We cannot wait any longer. I yield my final time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we next invite up Ms. Marietta Bailey, and on deck is Michelle, I'm going to mess this up, I'm sorry, Tordeo, T-O-R-D-O, you know who you are, sorry. All right, Ms. Bailey, if you could please confirm your name and relation to the district.
My name is Marietta Bailey. I am a staff member at the high school and a grandparent of three students here in the district.
Great, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
I would like to address the issue of allowing staff to carry guns at schools. A gun doesn't become an assault weapon unless you choose to assault someone with it. Otherwise, it is a peacekeeper. That's why in the United States, we have 390 million peacekeepers and only a handful of assault weapons that are turned into assault weapons by criminals and sick and evil individuals who do not follow laws and want to do harm. One reason schools are vulnerable is because of the Gun-Free School Zone Act of 1990. A gun-free zone makes schools a target and actually invites criminals with guns. The Gun-Free School Zone Act needs to be repealed. We need to stop advertising that schools are gun-free. Criminals who want to go to those places to murder people need to know that there is a possibility that there are armed guards and staff who can defend themselves. There are people, teachers, and parents saying they will not feel safe and fear for their children if there are guns in our schools, except we do have guns in our schools. There are armed police in the high school, Badger, Silverbrook, and the armed police visit the elementary schools regularly. If we have teachers or staff that are highly trained and willing to protect our students as well as a police officer, this will give our children a fighting chance. God forbid we happen to have a situation where this is needed. In the 22 states and school districts where this is already happening, where qualified teachers and staff are allowed to carry, there hasn't been a single mass shooting at one of those schools. If you vote yes, this will not authorize staff to carry guns. This will inform the legislature of Wisconsin to think about and possibly repeal the Gun-Free School Zone Act and allow staff to carry at schools. Of course, school districts would have to approve and create a policy and make a plan, and staff members who are willing and want to carry a gun would have to go through a background check and training. As a staff member, I don't have a problem with other staff members carrying concealed carry. Inanimate objects are not the problem, criminals are the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite forward Michelle, and you're going to tell me your last name, I am so sorry.
Can I get like ten seconds?
You almost should. Absolutely, yeah, we won't, we won't start until you do. And on deck is Anna Pachesny, so...
It's Torder, T-O-R-D-O-E-R, and I was in a car accident, so I have a lot of light sensitivity.
That's right, if, if you need your glasses on, that's totally fine. You've stated your name, if you could just note your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes are yours.
So I'm a resident and a parent.
Great, go ahead.
So, I am here to talk about the idea of teachers having guns in schools, and I think that perhaps one of the most effective things would be to consider a similar situation and kind of juxtapose the guns in schools to guns on planes. So, from 1961 to 1972, there were at least 159 airjacking, like airplane hijackings, and then from there to September 11th, I don't even know much more. Since 9/11, there have been zero in America. This is not because things don't get through TSA, it's not because they are so thorough, you know, nothing gets by them, and they do a great job, but it's that within eight months of 9/11, legislation was introduced, H.R. 4635, Arming Pilots Against Terrorism Act, and it was passed and became law by November of 2002. From the A.P.A.T. Act, the Federal Flight Deck Officer Program, also FFDO, was developed, and by April of 2003, the first class of FFDOs were receiving their free training and their firearm in accordance with the legislation. So, since 9/11, there have been at least 55 hijackings globally, but since 9/11, none of those hijackings have occurred in the United States. It is not a coincidence that the United States is the only country that both trains and arms its pilots, and I think that looking at this program and the parameters and how they enforce training periodically, the extent of training that they have, the requirements at which they disarm pilots from being able to be an FFDO, are all really significant things that could be utilized in the schools. And it's completely voluntary, and actually, as part of the FFDO, you're not allowed to disclose that you are an FFDO, and one of the reasons is, is that the disincentive to commit an act comes from not being certain but knowing there's a possibility that there is someone that's going to stand up to you and have a gun. So, it's human nature to seek an answer. We don't have an answer to the school shootings. Guns aren't a sole answer. We know that this is something that works. And inside of every school, there are certain teachers who will willingly run toward the sound of gunfire 10 seconds.
Sorry, sorry, well, please, if you could please, we...
Are you done with my name?
No, I'm sorry. We, we want to keep this even for everyone. Thank you, though. Appreciate your comments.
Good.
Yes.
Feel free to submit it to me. I'm sure. I know that I have to.
All right, thank you. All right, Anna, we welcome Anna Pachesny to the podium, and next will be then Bill Schultz. All right, welcome. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district.
My name is Anna Pachesny, and I'm a student at West Bend East.
Great, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
I am here today to address the new dress code at the high schools. In an email sent out to parents and students on September 1st, 2022, the alterations of the dress code state, "Students should not wear strapless garments, muscle shirts, and clothing that reveals excessive cleavage and/or midriff. All shirts should reach the top of a student's shorts, pants, or skirt. I will be here providing multiple reasons on why this dress code is ineffective and misogynistic. I sincerely hope that you take these reasons into account. Please note that I have researched these topics extensively, and I'm willing to provide sources upon request." Let me begin by acknowledging a quote taken directly from the email stating, "We, the school administration, are committed to creating a school environment that is safe and secure and conducive to positive and supportive learning and growth." This statement implies that women should cover up for their own safety. However, dress codes are rarely for the sake of safety. If concerned for the women because they will get assaulted based on how they dress, statistics show that you can be wearing anything, and you may be assaulted or raped. A girl's belly button should not and does not and should not play into it. The statement also implies that women should cover up so they are not distracting to their male counterparts and places the blame on the women for their peers' behaviors or lack of self-control. Women should not be responsible for their peers' lack of self-control or behavior. An experiment that was conducted regarding self-control in young children had results that confirmed that early in development, girls appear to outperform boys on measures of self-regulation. Education on self-control and mental health is crucial for young children. It is more common for men to lack a mental health education. Throughout my years in school, there has been a lack of mental health education. Mental health education needs to start at a young age to prevent these self-control and behavioral issues from becoming an increasingly difficult problem as years go on, and to get young children, especially men, the resources to learn to control themselves. By learning that their behavior is their responsibility, it no longer is the woman's responsibility to control their clothing and cover up for the sake of men. There are many reasons this dress code is inefficient. A few reasons include lack of self-expression for women, lack of rigid dress codes in college, which we are being prepared for, and affecting learning for the dress-coded student as they are pulled out of class, which takes away valuable learning time. It is also increasingly common to find little to no attire that conforms to school dress codes in stores. Due to recent trends, most women's tops are cropped or show midriff. As I conclude my argument, I would like to bring to your attention that during this speech, I have been wearing a crop top, yet it does not seem to affect your attentions toward, your attention towards me. My belly button should not affect the learning environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we invite forward Mr. Bill Schultz, and then on deck is Kate McCall. And Mr. Schultz, welcome, if you could state your name and relationship to the district.
Bill Schultz, parent and taxpayer.
All right, the next three minutes are yours, sir.
As I stand here and look at everyone in this room, parents, grandparents, cellphones ringing, aunts and uncles, friends and relatives, I can tell you all, tell you that we all have the same goal in mind, and that's to do everything that we can to give our kids and students the best future possible. After all, they are the future of this wonderful country that we all live in. For this to happen, we must protect them. We must guide them to be mentally strong, emotionally well, and physically here. It's 2022, and we can't take anything for granted anymore, including our safety and our kids' safety while at school. I'm very thankful and appreciative for the police officers that we do have in our schools. I support and back the blue, but in my opinion, we either need more police presence in our schools or people highly trained to stop a threat in our schools. I don't believe the four to five police officers we hire from the local West Bend Police Department is enough. That is why I strongly support teachers concealed carrying for many reasons. The best way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. The average police response time to an active shooter is three minutes, according to FBI data. The Marjory Stoned Douglas High School tragedy that happened on Valentine's Day in Florida lasted four minutes. Sandy Hook, I think we've all heard of that one, four and a half minutes. What if school and faculty is properly trained and armed? Could lives have been saved? I would like to think so. Criminals don't abide by the laws. Us law-abiding citizens do. Between 2009 and 2016, 86% of mass shootings happened in gun-free zones or an area in which guns are not allowed legally, according to a study done by the Crime Prevention Research Center. Thirty-two other states in the United States allow teachers or faculty to carry while at work. Germantown School District, just south of us, recently passed a resolution in support of changing the laws around schools being gun-free zones. I would like you, as board members tonight, to please discuss drafting a resolution similar to theirs. Next Monday, the Northern Owzaki School District will be voting on a very similar resolution, similar to Germantown's. That if passed, it would be the second school district in the state to formally support changing the gun-free zone laws to keep their students' safety as a top priority. I understand this topic can be very sensitive, delicate, and emotional. I ask you all to please keep an open mind to some of the facts I've given you. With crime on the rides, rise, our kids deserve to be protected from any threats at any and all cost. I hope and pray I never have to see my kids, your kids, or anyone else's kids harmed in an incident that easily could have been avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we invite forward Kate McCall, and then on deck is Amanda Daly. All right, Ms. McCall, welcome. If you could state your name and your relationship to the district.
Hi, I'm Kate McCall. I'm a parent and resident in the district.
All right, the next three minutes are yours. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to speak to two issues that are slated to be brought to the board today. The first is the matter of allowing pride and LGBTQIA+ related flags inside schools. Supporting our students in their identities and self-expression is not controversial. All our students deserve to be accepted, supported, and included at school. Please do not remove these flags or displays from our school, schools. The second matter is the matter of arming our teachers. It's no secret that there is a school violence problem in this country, and we would all like our students to be as safe as possible. Arming teachers is not the solution. Adding more guns to the school environment only escalates the issue, and what we need is to de-escalate the problem. Adding guns to classrooms invites gun-related accidents and incidents. Additionally, teachers are not police officers and did not become teachers because they actually wanted to be police officers, but they decided teachers was better. Our schools employ school resource officers who have extensive training inside the school and are on campus during school hours to respond to threats, as well as policies and procedures in place to respond to concerning situations and events. Our schools work closely with the West Bend Police Department, and our police take student safety events very seriously. I am a parent of a West Bend student, and I want her to be as safe as possible everywhere that she is. Arming school staff is not going to make her safer at school. There is no place for guns in our schools outside of the well-trained police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we invite forward Amanda Daly, and on deck is Jody Geenan. All right, good, good evening. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district.
My name is Amanda Daly. I am a staff member, resident, and parent in the district.
Great, all right, the next three minutes are yours.
Good evening. I am here tonight speaking as a concerned parent and staff member in our school district. There are two topics that have been brought forward recently that are detrimental to the well-being of students in our community. The suggestion to look towards arming staff as a safety measure is the first item I'd like to discuss. The training expense, responsibility, and liability this would bring does not add to our school's safety. If anything, it would make our schools feel less safe and would bring numerous risks. West Bend School District has a strong, longstanding partnership with the West Bend Police Department and other emergency response teams to protect our schools and keep our kids safe. There is no rationale or data that would justify arming staff. The financial burden that this plan would bring is a gross misuse of taxpayer money, which could be put to far better use in so many ways for the benefit of the children in our community. The other item I would like to discuss is the suggested removal of BLM and pride displays, flags, or similar items. All students have the right to feel safe and welcome in our schools. Removing these items to appease a fraction is disturbing and completely contradicts our school district's vision of excellence for all. I trust that our school board will do what is best for all of our children to allow them to feel safe and valued throughout their educational journey. Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome forward Jody Geenan, and on deck is Jason Pennerman. Welcome, Ms. Geenan. If you could please state your name and then your relationship to the district.
Hello, my name is Jody Geenan. I'm a taxpayer and a resident of West Bend who cares about families in our community. I will speak briefly on two topics today, concealed carry for staff and political paraphernalia in the classrooms. Regarding concealed carry, an impressive 32 states, as you've heard, allow teachers to effectively protect children by carrying a firearm on campus. That's over three-fifths of our country. In 1999, 10 people were already killed and/or injured at a high school in Littleton, Colorado, and in three minutes it took for the school resource officer to be alerted. In 2012, 26 people were shot by a 20-year-old within five minutes at an elementary school in Connecticut. The police arrived about one minute after the shooter took himself out. In 2018, 17 people were killed and more injured in a high school in Florida within minute, within four minutes. In all three situations, no staff was equipped to defend themselves or students, and the stories continue to pile. With an uptick of school shootings, state and local governments have become proactive to curtail these tragedies by arming and training their willing and approved staff for such emergencies. Inside of every school, there are certain teachers who will willingly run toward the sound of gunfire. The schools identify these people and tell them, "Whatever tool and training you're comfortable with, we are going to give to you." There are numerous accounts of armed staff helping to block or stop school shootings. Florida's comprehensive school safety legislation enacted after the Parkland event allows school districts to decide whether to participate in the school guardian program if it is available in their county. A school guardian must complete 132 hours of comprehensive firearm safety and proficiency training, pass a psychological evaluation and initial drug test, and subsequent random drug tests. No teacher is required to participate. If the school board decides in favor of concealed carry for staff, obviously, it cannot get put into place in our school district unless our state legislature passes a law to allow it. Your vote simply tells our legislature that our school district is in favor of joining the other 32 states in enacting such a law. I urge you to vote yes to concealed carry for staff. Regarding the political paraphernalia in the classroom, Policy 381 makes it clear that teachers and staff are not supposed to display or speak their political bias, especially concerning matters of race, sexuality, religion, and social violence, of which BLM and LGBTQLMNOP flags, stickers, and posters encompass. These visually controversial materials should be immediately removed without question, and Policy 381 needs to establish some consequences and follow-up to ensure that teachers and staff comply because it lacks that, the consequences and the follow-up, and so that's why we've got these things in the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we...
President?
Yes.
As a point of order, in between, we've had a reporter place an open mic onto our podium, which could be interfering with our own sound. I would ask that they seek assistance with our Director of Technology in the background, Mr. Tim Carter, who can help you with your own volume or assistance.
All right, we'll pause for that moment. Mr. Pennerman, you'll be up next. All right, welcome. Mr. Pennerman, if you could state your name, please, and then your relationship to the district.
My name is Jason Pennerman. I'm a parent, teacher, and a union officer.
Very good. The next three minutes are yours.
My name is Jason Pennerman. I ask the board and the West Bend School District community to say no to any extremist proposals to put guns in employees' hands in our community's public schools. I have taught in West Bend public schools for 21 years. For 19 years, I've been an officer for the West Bend Education Association. Like a union officer represents union nurses, the trades, firefighters, and police, I and other union members represent over 400 teachers. In my 19 years in West Bend, no teachers have ever asked the WBA to arm administrators or teachers. Just last year, a small group of very vocal citizens depicted teachers as devious, dangerous, and untrustworthy, and now some members of the same group want to arm teachers with lethal weapons. It's really ironic, trust, no, uh, no trust, now trust. Our police and administration do have a solid safety plan. Students participate in safety drills every year. According to EveryTownResearch.org, guns, lots of research shows, guns in schools will increase safety risks, accidents, fatalities, and fear. As a result, families will pull their children out, and teachers will leave or not apply here, and I think this is another attempt by anti-public education people to divide our community, scare parents and children, coerce teachers, and ultimately destroy public education. I ask the board and the West Bend School District community to say no to any extremist proposals to put guns in the classrooms in our community's public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, as we were straightening out that microphone issue, I forgot to indicate who was on deck. So Mr. Nick Stewart is going to be next, and Rhett Engelking will be on deck. So we invite forward Nick Stewart. Good evening. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district.
My name is Nick Stewart. I am a resident and a parent of the district.
All right, thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
I'm speaking here today to highlight the importance of balancing our budget and ensuring complete transparency between the school board and the people living in the West Bend School District. Balancing the school budget, I'm sure, is no easy task. Balancing any budget to include our own household sometimes requires us to make some tough decisions and sacrifices. The amount of money that has been flowing into school districts from the state and federal level has dramatically increased over the last few years in the form of helping. Did their decisions help or hurt our children? The executive branch of the state of Wisconsin, along with state health experts, two years ago, thought it was best that all students go to remote learning in the state. Many of the health experts in the CDC thought the same, and many school districts followed this guidance. Last week, as reported in our very own Washington County Daily News, that according to the National Report Card, it's been monitoring this data for 50 years, quote, "Mounting evidence shows that students who took part in remote learning lost about half of an academic year of learning," unquote. So, great job to those board members that were on the board at the time and made your decision based on the needs of the students in our school district. I could go on with more examples, but I only have three minutes. My point is this, a balanced budget doesn't just mean being fiscally responsible anymore. It means a lot more today. A balanced budget means that we have the freedom to make the decisions on all things that impact our school-aged children. that impact our school-aged children. It means that the people in this room and living in this district get to decide what's best for our kids, not a panel of state or federal bureaucrats coming at our kids with sacks of money and broad brushes telling us they know what's best. How do we protect ourselves from outside forces? Transparency is one. Great example: a month ago, I had a few questions about the S.R. survey that was sent out. I contacted Melanie, and she immediately put me in touch with Superintendent Wimmer, who called me the very next day and answered all of my questions. We had a great conversation. Now I'm here speaking publicly about that. That is exactly how our local process should work, so great job. When discussing the S.R. questions, I asked why cell language is being used with mental health. Those two should be separate. I work in the mental health industry. This is when Superintendent Wimmer said that some of the questions was done by her office and some questions were required by the state. However, that is not how it seemed to be presented. In the future, when surveys are sent out about how to use funds from outside districts, it would be helpful to label those questions as state-mandated questions. The money is not free when we're trading our integrity in decision-making for those funds. If we continue to allow state and federal funds to seep into our school system, along with their proven poor decision-making, we will reach a point where the citizens of the school district and even our elected school board members will no longer have control over the education that is taught to our children in our school district. It is much easier to say no to outside money when you have a balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We invite forward Rhett Engelking, and Carly Durian will be next. All right. Good evening. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district.
Hi. My name is Rhett Engelking. I'm a mental health professional, and I work with several students in the district.
Great. If you could please, or the next three minutes are yours. Please go ahead.
Great. As I said, I'm a mental health professional. I've worked at Rogers Memorial Hospital for eight years. I currently work for the county in the CCS program. I've also done three years of clinical research into trauma specifically for the Medical College of Wisconsin in both Children's Hospital ER and Freiter ER, and I'm also the son of two teachers who've taught in this district. My father taught for 36 years. Sorry, it's hard for me to talk about my father because my father was killed by a gentleman well over a year ago, and he was killed with his own gun, as well as our neighbor, who was killed with his own gun, by a disturbed individual who was unarmed, who came into their home and killed both people with their own gun. I think the proposal that I've heard to introduce guns in a school is ludicrous. It puts our teachers, it puts our children, at risk. For people who don't understand that gun violence is the number-one killer of children in the country right now, it's the first time that's ever been the case, and the idea of introducing guns to teachers who are otherwise focusing on opening up kids to education, the idea to bring a gun into that situation where they're also responsible for tactically addressing possible situations, is, again, it's losing the heart of what teaching is, which is basically responding to each individual student, getting to know them, getting to know their history. 91% of school shootings are from people who are somewhat otherwise affiliated with their schools. The idea of some phantom person coming in is so remote compared to the very real threat of carelessly leaving a gun around, unintentionally discharging a gun in the classroom, having a gun stolen by a delinquent kid and used. I mean, the threat it brings in is well-documented. I'd be happy to submit to the board any number of research articles that suggest, at a very minimum, anytime you introduce a gun into a situation, it both escalates the situation and it increases the potential for domestic violence. The only other thing I guess I wanted to say is that it also seems kind of ludicrous to me that the same people I'm hearing talk about banning LGBT and BLM flags from a classroom are simultaneously saying, "Well, guns, we need to have guns in here, but not flags." I have knowledge of zero incidents of a flag killing somebody and several incidents of violence killing individuals.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. All right. Next, Carly Durian, and on deck is Carol Hager. Welcome. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district.
I do have a quick question. I have, like, things that I printed. Would I be able to give them to you?
You can submit them to Superintendent Wimmer, absolutely.
Okay. So my name is Carly Durian, and I am actually a senior at the West Bend East High School. And I'm talking about the dress code. So I believe that the newly-enforced dress code at our high school limits self-expression of students and over-sexualizes girls. Administration claims it's reinforced due to quote-unquote "safety reasons" and to quote "meet shop class requirements," end quote, but I do not believe that these are the only reasons. Girls are being targeted specifically due to the over-sexualization of our bodies. We're told no excessive cleavage or midriff, but boys are allowed to take off their shirts when they're hot at a sport practice or a game. If my friends and I are not even allowed to show just an inch of our stomachs, which I got dress-coated in this exact outfit, all the way down to the shoes, then why can they be shirtless? I also believe this dress code is unfair due to the ever-changing temperatures in our school that Cameron mentioned. No room is the same temperature, and in many of my classes, the rooms are unbearably hot. Another thing most people don't like to acknowledge is that girls have periods. These change our hormones and can cause us to be hotter than we normally would be. So it's easier to have hot flashes and almost pass out. If administration wants to also use college and career readiness as an excuse as well, then why am I being pulled out of class? On September 7th, I was pulled out of class for the second time to be told that my shirt was too short and that I needed to change or go home. I don't understand why an inch of my stomach showing is enough of a problem to obstruct my learning. I also don't understand why the dress code is enough of a problem to write someone up. Teachers have more important things to do than worry about a teen's clothing, and I hope administration would, too. Admin also says it's to prepare for college and career readiness, but they choose to ignore the fact that most colleges don't have any dress codes or excessive ones. I hope admin also realizes that the clothes that we choose to wear are some of the more appropriate things that are currently trending and sold in stores. We also do not want to spend even more money on clothes that are acceptable to the dress code just because admin didn't tell us until after we went back to school shopping. Hundreds of kids already got new clothes and don't want to spend their own money or their parents' money on things they won't wear again after high school. Why is the dress code reinforced after COVID? Kids are already struggling with enough. Why make their clothes an other issue? If administration wants to continue to use safety and shop class requirements as an excuse, then why aren't I being forced to wear closed-toed shoes? I believe the requirement should only apply to the specific class and students taking it. And I actually have a quote from a mechanic that my dad is friends with. His name is David Freeman, and he says, "As a mechanic, I get the safety element for shop class." Okay, so have those in that class adhere to proper safety protocols in that class. But otherwise, this policy is clearly unfair and serves as inadequate discrimination." So I would also like to bring up the point of a kid at my school, I'm not going to say his name, it's on the paper, but he did comment about my petition and say that if you guys want to take off your shirts, so be it. I ain't complaining, and that is the thing that needs to be addressed. It needs to be men, women, everybody in the school who's sexualizing young teenage girls. I mean, I'm 17, but there are 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds. We should not be treated as someone that you see down the street and, like, you want to say something to.
Thank you. We invite forward Carol Hager at this point, and on deck is Kelly Kind. Welcome. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes will be yours.
I'm Carol Hager, a resident of West Bend. I'm glad that there may be some action concerning Policy 381 about controversial issues. According to the number-one point in the policy, "Teachers are, quote, 'expected to teach about the topic in a manner that adheres to and that is consistent with the prescribed curriculum.'" Number four states, "District employees may not use their position to attempt to indoctrinate or convince students to adopt the employee's personal beliefs or personal worldview." As many of you already know, some teachers have presented or discussed controversial topics in their classrooms in the past years. For example, the eighth-grade English Language Arts students at Badger Middle School were given a privilege test, which obviously was designed to make some students feel guilty because of their race or economic situation. Parents were not notified of this survey in advance. Later, it was discovered that an article in Esquire magazine mentioned that high school social studies teachers for years were having students sing liberal and conservative songs that were written by a West Bend history teacher. There's also an instance where a U.S. history corps teacher planned on showing several R-rated movies in class. He sent home a parent permission slip that included movies like Schindler's List, which includes an extramarital scene with a Nazi and his mistress, and Born on the Fourth of July, which I consider one of the most vulgar movies I've ever seen. The permission slip also shared that there would be other movies to be determined. That's a concern. The permission slip was asking parents to sign approval for unknown movies that were not even listed on the form, and some of the students in the class were under the age of 17, what liberal Hollywood has determined as the age that's appropriate to view R-rated movies. It's sad that we have teachers in the West Bend School District who may not even be aware that they're pushing liberal views on our students. They're wasting educational time on these questionable activities, such as the privilege test and movies that take four to five days of class time to view. Our students are academically behind many other school districts and deserve to learn solid subjects that are taught in a balanced manner. From my reading of Policy 381, there is no specific mention of visual material such as flags and posters that are displayed in the classrooms. Students have reported that there are pride flags and BLM materials in the classrooms. Furthermore, Policy 381 does not require teachers to compile a list of materials that they want to use that are outside of the regular curriculum, as is done in other districts. These lists of non-curricular materials are reviewed for approval by the school district committee that might include teachers, administrators, parents, or community residents. Policy 381 also does not include any sanctions for teachers who are found to repeatedly include biased materials in their classrooms. Hopefully, the school board will consider tightening Policy 381. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kelly Kind, it's time for you to come to the podium, and next will be Stephen Roberts. If you could state your name, I'm sorry. If you could state your name, great. And your relationship to the district.
I have children, and I'm a resident.
Great. Thank you.
My concern, not only today, but for the past few years, is the sexualization of the students in the district. In 2018, my daughter was an eighth grader at Badger. The students in health class were asked what someone could do to prevent being raped. There was no discussion of teaching consent or stating the obvious, such as raping someone is wrong. Last year, in the employability skills class at the high school, a true-or-false question was asked on a test. The question was, "Women and girls use their sex appeal to get what they want at school and work." The students who answered false were told they were wrong and that the correct answer is true, that women and girls do use their sex appeal to get what they want. And now this year, the students are being pulled out of class for holes in their jeans or their belly button exposed. I even have a recording of a teacher last week telling her students that they shouldn't show their belly buttons because it will attract sex offenders. That teacher is Mrs. Avi, by the way. The clothing that someone chooses to wear is not disrupting them from getting an education. It is the staff that is pulling them out of class for what they are wearing. It is incredibly disturbing that there are school staff members that are so uncomfortable with shoulders, legs, and belly buttons. They are essentially telling these girls that the burden to not be sexually assaulted lies with them. Our children have been going through active shooter drills their entire lives. They are very well aware that the possibility of being gunned down and murdered in their classroom could happen. Why are we making their lives more miserable by shaming them for what they choose to wear? In 2018, an eighth grader at Badger overdosed on heroin in the school bathroom. Last year, at the charity dance at the high school, at least four students fell over and were unresponsive due to suspected drug overdoses. Right before Christmas break last year, multiple students were taken by ambulance the same day due to fentanyl-laced THC cards they ingested. The school kept these incidents quiet from the community. Parents of students in the district have a right to know what's happening so we can have the proper discussion with our children about drugs and overdose awareness. Yet, the administration wants parents to discuss dress code compliance with our kids instead of having conversations that really matter.
Thank you.
Mr. President, point of order, just for the sake of those who are continuing to speak, if there's a specific staff member or student that should be removed from your speech, you can speak to one of us privately, either the board president or myself, because that would be an issue that needed to be investigated. Just for those who are still on the docket to speak, no individual student names unless it's your own, and no staff member names. And again, we'd be open and available to take comment or concerns regarding individuals.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, hello.
Yes, if you'd state your name, please, and your relationship to the district.
Stephen Roberts. I'm a West Bend resident. I'm a parent of three who completed their K-12 education in our district. I'm a retired psychotherapist, having worked with individuals, couples, families dealing with mental health and addiction issues, including trauma, abuse, and post-traumatic stress disorder. I want to comment on the agenda-action item, potential political advocacy by the board, and I'll be pretty brief. There's absolutely no research that indicates that schools, and I mean students, employees, educators, and administrators, there is no research that makes schools safer from a potential mass shooting with more guns in schools. Despite the horrible tragedies of the mass shootings like Parkland in Florida and Uvalde in Texas, mass shootings are exceedingly rare. There are 130,000 schools in our nation, educating 54 million students. There are significant polling results that consistently, that show consistently that the public supports other commonsense gun regulation, which would have the effect of decreasing risk in schools. And there is clear research that legislation such as red flag laws, more strict background checks, and age restrictions increase student and school safety. I personally know more than one school district employee who has indicated that in discussing with their spouses that they would resign if the current Wisconsin statutes are changed to allow guns in schools. I trust that the school administration, professionals, who are knowledgeable regarding schools and students, together with local law enforcement, have made and will continue to make the best decisions for our students and employees' safety and security. So I strongly urge the board, after the later discussion tonight, to decide not to pursue any further discussion of these dangerous ideas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Invite forward Rachel, I apologize, Koeferl, K-O-E-F-E-R-L. Sorry, hopefully I got that close. And on deck is, I think, Maddy Eichstat. Rachel, if you could please state your name and your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes are yours.
My name is Rachel Caprell. I have three students in the district, and I'm a West Bend resident. Although I believe wholeheartedly that schools should and must be safe for all students, arming staff is not the answer. Let's take a look at the recent events that happened in Texas. There were many police officers present and armed in the building throughout that horrific tragedy that occurred, but this still did not prevent nor stop the horrible events that happened. If our trained law enforcement is not properly trained or willing to go in to stop an active shooter, how can we expect our teachers and support staff to do this? Will it be optional for teachers to become trained? What kind and how much training will be required? What will they need to do to pass this training? Will they receive psychological evaluations before being able to carry it in the schools? Are families going to be able to request teachers based on their level of armed training? If a trained teacher does not successfully stop a gunman, is he or she liable? Teachers don't even get adequate supplies through funding that they need to perform their actual function. How are we paying for this training and their weapons? How long before an upset student disarms a teacher, and we have an even bigger problem? In the time where there is mass exodus of teachers out of this profession, is this really the expectation that we should be putting on them? Before jumping into teachers carrying lethal weapons, I instead would like to see non-threatening actions put into place. If we can afford training gun use and paying to hand out weapons to our teachers, we can afford things such as metal detectors at the doors or therapy for high-risk students. Arming staff is not the answer, but merely a near-jerk response to the school shootings that have been plaguing our nation. Although the board's willingness to look at student safety is commemorable, this is not the answer. I disapprove of this solution and how it also sets a dangerous precedent for the way of guns in the school are handled in this nation. And I didn't plan on talking about this. I only recently found out that this was something that was going to be discussed, but I am appalled that here we are in the year 2022, and we are discussing banning supporting members of the LGBT community or those of the African-American community. Being born a certain way is not political. Excellence for all? What about these students? I don't think discussing banning these things makes these students feel very excellent.
Thank you. Maddy Eichstat, you can come forward, and then Claire Refelt would be next. I'm sure I've not pronounced these correctly, so I'll give you an opportunity to correct me. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes will be yours.
My name is Maddie Eichstad, and I'm a junior at East. Last Thursday, I was dress coded while wearing leggings and a cropped v-neck shirt showing some of my midriff and cleavage. I was also told to cover up by my male science teacher while moving his hand over his upper chest. I was taken to office, and I was out of my class for 30 minutes. I was also told more than one reason for why I was dress coded, such as safety, distraction, and professionalism. Many girls have not been dress coded while wearing something similar to what I was wearing, so why is this lack of enforcement allowed? I also saw a "Let's Go Brandon" and a "I Heart Hot Moms" shirt today. If my outfit is lacking professionalism, how are these shirts not? I've also seen Playboy, Virginity Rocks, and animal accessories, which would not be worn in a professional workplace but have not been dress coded. If this is a safety reason, why are open-toed shoes or shorts allowed? Chemicals could easily spill on these uncovered body parts, so why are my female body parts being targeted? If this is about distraction, why is my female body distracting but a male body is not? And how come it's the adults who are supposed to be educating me, making these subjective decisions? I was pulled out of my AP class and missed valuable information, as well as many others. Interrupting class time is the biggest distraction that there is. As a woman, I feel targeted as this dress code is aimed at women and is not fair shown in the reasons I stated. Students should be able to express themselves and wear what they are comfortable with and not be pinned by their adult teachers on whether it is showing too much or not. I ask you to think about the high school's new dress code and the true unfairness of these rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Claire Refelt, and then Jessica Engelhardt is next. Claire, welcome. If you could state your name and then your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Hi, I am Claire Refelt. I'm a junior at West Bend East High School. I'm here to talk about the dress code situation. Being part of a mass majority of students attending West Bend High School, I am one of the many concerned about the topic of the increasingly strict dress code. Not only have students been dress coded during the day, many have been pulled out of class, therefore distracting people more than a simple shirt ever will. A student's education should be the absolute top priority, no matter what. A student is pulled, if a student is pulled out of class in the middle of a lecture and brought back 20-plus minutes later, even more frustrated than what they were before, that's distracting students more than just keeping them in class with a little bit of skin showing. As a woman buying clothes that make me feel confident, I shouldn't have to worry about teachers finding my outfits too sexual or inappropriate. Now, I'm aware that a dress code still needs to be intact, but a couple inches of skin shouldn't have affect that. An inch or two of skin, and it shouldn't make me feel unsafe or insecure about my body or having, being, losing class time. On top of that, being asked to change into clothes I don't have with me at the time and asking my parents to bring me clothes shouldn't be necessary. Asking to leave school if I don't have that shirt or my parents won't bring it to me is pulling them out of the workplace and asking them to take out of the job that our parents have sent us to school to learn how to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Jessica Engelhardt, followed by Jacob Miller. Welcome, if you could please state your name and your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes are yours.
I'm Jessica Engelhardt, and I'm a parent of two children in the district. I'd like to speak very briefly on the proposal to allow staff and teachers within the school district to conceal carry. Now, I grew up in a house with guns. I grew up in a house of avid hunters. I am well acquainted with gun safety. I am well acquainted with being reverent to guns. My husband and I choose not to have guns in our home. We're not hunters, and we don't use guns for sports, so that's not something that we need. However, I don't, I obviously grew up in a home with guns, so I don't have any issue or any fault with individuals who use their guns in an appropriate and safe manner. However, there is an enormous body of evidence that shows that if you have a gun in your home, your home is statistically less safe, and you or someone in your home are statistically more likely to be harmed by that gun. So I'm really struggling to understand how you can all look at me and tell me that my home is less safe simply with the presence of a gun, but my child's classroom is going to be more safe with the presence of a gun. And I guess in addition to that, I'm also really struggling to understand how you can all look at me and tell me that a flag is so dangerous and detrimental to my children that it can't be in their classroom, but a gun can. So, that's really all I have to say, and I'm going to yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Invite forward Jacob Miller. And then our last comment card is from Jack Steele. So we'll start with Mr. Miller, we invite you forward. If you could state your name and your relationship to the district, and then the next three minutes are yours.
My name is Jacob Miller. I'm an alumni of East High School, and I'm a resident of the district. I'm here today to present my support for allowing concealed carry permanent holders to conceal carry in the district. It would increase safety in our district if we allow people to carry if they're permitted to do so. According to a 2016 report from the Crime Prevention Research Center, concealed carry permit holders are the most law-abiding demographic in America. Also, currently, we protect our district with a sign that reads "No Firearms Allowed." I support changing that to allow, we allow, carry of firearms by those who are allowed by law to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then we welcome our final speaker, Jack Steele. Welcome. If you could please state your name and your relationship to the district, and the next three minutes will be yours.
Hi there, my name is Jack Steele. I'm a resident and alumni of West High School, class of 22, and I'm here speaking tonight regarding my concern of the health and safety in our students at both high schools. We as a district and a community strive to provide an environment where our students can effectively learn and feel safe and welcome in their building. Recent events have proven this not to be the case. As I'm sure many are aware, there's been a petition and protest at the high school with over 1,500 signatories. Copy of this petition can be seen in the provided folio, and this event cites students not feeling welcomed and over-sexualized by the high school dress code, as the policy verbiage is seen as drawing attention to young women's bodies and their midriffs compares to those who identify or present as male. My concern here tonight is that our administration has taken the stance of reprimanding students rather than taking their concerns to heart. Looking at neighboring districts such as Hartford, The Falls, and Whitefish Bay, the verbiage in their high school dress codes is much more inclusive, with policies stating, quote, "Providing a physically and emotionally safe environment for all students and staff," unquote, end quote, "recognizing that each student's dress and appearance is a reflection of personal style and individuality. Generally, students may dress in any style they desire and may present themselves in a way that is consistent with their identity," end quote. This is a great example of school administration viewing students as people with their own individualities rather than a rule breaker. Neighboring district policies are listed as provided. I strongly advocate for our high school admin to work with students in a dress code reform to better represent our student body. Even furthermore concerning than our dress code is incidents that affect the physical and mental well-being of students that go unnoticed or unreported by our admin. The position of admin in regards to the dress code was made very clear to students and families with the attached social media posts, but when an incident occurred that a student vandalized another student's car with racist and homophobic slurs, no communication was required for that. This incident is depicted in providing documents of which were also widely spread on social media in the same manner as the dress code protest, and there was no communication regarding this hurtful incident. When students fight in our halls or bathrooms, there's nothing sent home to students or family regarding our policies on violence. I personally have experienced being stuck in a bathroom stall as multiple students were throwing each other against walls or fixtures. Even though these incidents are reported to admin and staff, there is rarely, if ever, communication to students and families about these unacceptable acts and our policies regarding such. If the high school admin is trying to work on student behavior and make the school a welcoming and safe place, then we should be focusing on the real threats to our students, not if a student's belly button is visible. We want our students to have an effective learning environment, and we cannot have that with students fighting in the halls and vandalizing property. Work with our students, not against them. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker for public participation. I'm just going to pause and thank everyone who spoke for coming and for respecting our process, for the time limits, for respecting each other. The board benefits from all these divergent viewpoints, and we appreciate it very much. All right. We'll continue on then with our consent agenda. And our consent agenda consists of a number of items. We have minutes of the August 22, 2022, regular board meeting. We have three contracts, let's see, one resignation, no retirements, and it also includes dispersments posted to September 2, 2022. I move for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Schmidt is absent. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot? Mr. Engert?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Weigerfoltz, yes, and Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Great, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on then to reports. And our first report, School Presentations, Early Learning, Decora and Fair Park, and I believe Dr. Jill Reese, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is going to walk us through that presentation.
While they're taking the podium, just recall that we started doing individual school presentations. We did a semester kind of full district view. Each school had the opportunity to present, so they're just coming to close that loop, show what some of their data points showed. Each one of them leads with what's in the back. It's our continuous improvement plan, so they don't need to go over those pieces, but you'll see those elements that you're familiar with around academic performance, safety and security, and other things they might be working on, and they'll express their goals for the year ahead. They'll come back then again second semester and report on those goals.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening. So we're going to start with early learning, and we have Jamie Malsum and Matt Durant that are going to do a co-presentation. Then we will move to Decora, and we have Adrian Schneider presenting from that building. And then we have Fair Park, and we have Tristan Hayes presenting for that building. Thank you.
Thank you, school board, for having us again tonight. My name is Matt Durant. This is Jamie Malsum. We just appreciate your time, and as Dr. Reese said, we are going to be talking to you tonight about our school improvement plan. So if you recall, last year, we had a sea of yellow in the audience. We encouraged them to watch online tonight. Today was their first day of school, so we wanted to make sure to give them some time at home as well. So this is just a demonstration of the pyramid for the school district, and what you're looking at is how early learning fits into that. So this summer, we met as a building leadership team. We developed our site improvement plans, looking at our data, and we're going to go over each one of these points individually. So first, we're going to talk about literacy. So we set a rigorous goal for ourselves. That goal is 90% of our students will meet or exceed the language and literacy benchmark in their developmental continuum. So tonight, later in the presentations, you'll hear a lot about STAR and FORWARD. Early learning doesn't take STAR and FORWARD, so we have something different. It's called Teaching Strategies Gold. At the very top of your screen, you'll see kind of an image of what that looks like. So it's a continuum. Three-year-olds are in the green band, and four-year-olds are in the blue band. As you can see, there's a wide range of typical, okay? We want our three- and four-year-olds to be at the far right of that continuum so that we can send them to 5K as ready for school as possible. We know that there's a couple of strategies that help support us, so if you direct your attention to the picture, you can see that students looking at a lot of visuals. It's all play-based learning and early learning, and on top of that, we've found that repeated readings really help our students, so we're really going to focus on those things as action steps this year. In math, we've also set a rigorous goal for ourselves. We want 90% of our students achieving those same levels. Again, I'll direct your attention to those pictures. So we have a student looking at 10 frames. 10 frames are going to be something that they experience in kindergarten, so we're getting them ready for that. And we have a little guy that's thinking really, really hard about making patterns with his goldfish there. These are, again, skills that they need to have to be ready for kindergarten. I'll pass it to Jamie. She's going to talk about employee engagement and our behavior.
The pictures that you see on the screen here show the early learning leadership team's first day together in August, and we were busy diving into data and looking at our school improvement plan and developing that together. When we started to dig into some of the data around engagement and customer satisfaction, we noticed a difference between the early learning certified staff and the paraprofessional staff in the job satisfaction category. So by the end of the school year, we're hoping to increase the job satisfaction by 5%. And we're going to take a two-pronged approach for that. We're going to look at classroom engagement and program engagement. When I think about classroom engagement, we're going to streamline communication by sharing of lesson plans and individual student goals with all of the classroom staff. And at a program level, Matt and I are going to embed brief professional development in our regularly scheduled monthly paraprofessional meetings. When I think about safe and secure, we want to talk about kindergarten readiness, social skills with our early learning students, things such as making friends, waiting, taking turns, and we see our data up on the screen there, and we really want to maintain that and increase that, again, with that rigorous 90% goal. We're going to continue embedding pyramid model training with all of our new staff. I'm proud to say that it's our 15th year of pyramid model implementation in the program. We're going to provide professional development for support staff in the areas of behavior incident reports embedded again in those monthly meetings, and calibrate the student success team process across all of our different sites. These pictures up here kind of highlight the uniqueness of our program. Again, we are three programs spread across nine different community agency partnering sites. Oh, no. We can't let the cuteness go away. But this is how we learn. I mean, you can't, you know, tell the story better than a picture. So here you'll see pictures of our students engaging in nature-based learning outside as well as play-based learning. You'll see at the bottom, that goes really well with our literacy goal. Our students are recreating a story that they were working on all week, so that further embeds that skill and knowledge in them.
So we want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions for us, we'd have you on your team.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Kurt?
Is enrollment going up or down in the early learning program?
Yep. I can speak to the Head Start piece of it. Our numbers, we haven't started a year with this high of numbers in quite some time, so we continue to enroll students in the Head Start program today. We've still got registrations for next week as well, so it's definitely increasing in that program.
So in 4K, as you know, we're community-based. Our 4K providers are in similar situations to us. The 4K is rather small. So all of the RAP here, things like that they do for four-year-olds, is smaller this year. We're told, though, that the 3's coming up next year is a very large class, so it just happens that sometimes we have a smaller class and a larger class evolve.
Okay. Just wanted to add one comment, and thank you for sharing that information. I remember the kids last year, they're enthusiastic learners. I think as a West Bend school district, we're in favor of getting the kids in the classroom as soon as possible, and we're seeing some benefits of that. And regarding enrollment quick, just for even those listening, we're seeing some leveling off of our early learning and our kindergarten classes from our declining enrollment of our heavy high school classes. So it's just another data point. So again, just a couple extra comments there.
For the literacy benchmarks, for instance, how often are those measured? And I'm sorry if you, if you address that and I missed that, but is that something that's continuous, or is that done at certain checkpoints? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yep, so it's actually both. It's a formative assessment tool, but we do have three different checkpoint periods throughout the school year. So teachers are constantly monitoring progress, and then at those three different checkpoint periods, we take a peek at that and with our early learning leadership team and kind of monitor that progress that way as well.
Great. Other questions? All right, thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations on your 4K.
Thank you.
All right.
I believe next up is Adrian Schneider, Principal of Decora.
All right, thank you for having us tonight. Adrian Schneider, Principal at Decora School. I'm proud to be here on behalf of my staff. It was the first Monday, and it was a rainy one to start, so have them at home getting ready for the day tomorrow. So I am here to speak on the goals that we have here at Decora, and I'll start with our literacy goal. So I, I chose- So I chose to share with you what our proficiency on our literacy looked like in the spring and then what our goal is to be at the end of this school year. So you can see it broken down there by kind of like bands. So our kindergarten and first graders take early literacy. And then our second through fourth graders take the reading assessment within STAR, which is we take three times a year. And then our third and fourth graders also take the forward exam, which is the state assessment. So you can see what our proficiency was in the spring and then what we hope to be at at the end of the school year. So some of the things that we're looking to do to support the growth in those goal areas, one of them is to have our reading intervention team go into the classroom with our students to provide intervention and additional small group support. That will help to give the students more opportunities for that small group instruction, taking them out of the classroom less frequently. And then it also allows for some cross-caboration with the staff members that are working with children to happen a little more fluidly without interruption as well. We are lucky to have our literacy coaches at our building, our literacy specialists, who are very versed in literacy development and helping our teachers with coaching, helping them with identified grade-level goals, student or teacher-specific goals. So we launched that last week, so the grades are working through what their goals are for this first chunk of time to help support that literacy instruction in the classroom. Another item that we are going to be doing this year is a parent education night. So we'll be inviting our parents in a couple of times during the school year. We'll focus on the parents of our students who are receiving intervention, but we'll be offering opportunities for other parents as well, who are interested in learning more about how they can support their literacy learners at home to help just support that across the entire day for a child. Another piece with regards to math, we are, I think, year seven in using our Bridges math curriculum. And while we feel very confident that it is the right program for our students, we know that we have to support that with some more professional development for our staff. So we're working with a math coach to help us with our teachers so that they can provide the best instruction possible with our students with the different facets of the program that we have. We want to make sure that they are utilizing those resources to the best of their capabilities. And so we'll be working with a math coach this year to help us do that. And also the teachers really taking a look at the data that they have. One of the things that we have available within Bridges is the teachers do a pre-assessment for the students. The students take a look at that, they decide, and we don't expect the students to know much of anything with that pre-assessment because much of it has not yet been taught. But then what is a student's goal within the unit? What do they really want to strengthen? And then how does that look at the end of that unit? We are doing that pretty fluidly at our upper levels, and so looking to grow that at our younger levels with our students. And then next, under adult engagement. I'm not touching anything. I don't know why it keeps going out on me up there. It's a little disconcerting.
A little bit of a short that we started experiencing, so you might see a flicker in the screen.
I'm all right. I know this like the back of my hand, so we're all good. So adult engagement, the staff survey that was taken last winter yielded that our staff, the area that we wanted to work on, is that we want our staff to want to work at Decora. So we had 72.5% of our staff say that they would recommend Decora as a place to work. And of course, we want to strengthen that. We want more staff to say that. So we're looking to do some things with our culture of positive recognition amongst colleagues, the improvement of quality of communication between staff and direct supervisor. I want to make sure that I am giving my staff what they need in terms of communication, whether it's things that are happening at the district level that I can help communicate better or be that liaison between the school and the district with families, whatever that needs to be. So looking to support that as best I can. Improve their satisfaction with current workload. Teaching is hard, and it's not an eight-to-five, eight-to-four job. It is long hours, long nights, weekends. A weekend, you know, doesn't go by where I don't get an email or a text from a teacher asking about something related to a student. So we know that it's hard, and so we're working to, how can we improve that satisfaction with their workload so they do feel that there is that balance? And that word is a little off, maybe because there really isn't a balance, which is we know different times of the year require different amounts of our time. And so how do we make sure that we are meeting our folks where they are at? And then engage in staff wellness activities throughout the year. We want to have our staff be healthy and happy. And so doing some things at the site level to make sure that that occurs. We have the beautiful Eisenbaum right behind our school and alongside of it. Last week, the staff found a 15-minute walking path that they can do that takes them through Ziegler Park. And so looking for some ways to just get out and enjoy one another in short little spurts, to take a little break from the demands of our day-to-day. And then finally, tonight, we're looking at our student behavior and belonging. So the data shared with you here is what our data looked like last year with our students who ended as kindergarten through third graders, who are now our first through fourth graders. We identified that the playground and the classroom were where the majority of our behavior incidents has occurred. And you can see on the graph what that looked like for majors versus minors, and then how many students were represented within those demographics. But what the story doesn't tell you on the screen is that 87% of Decora students last year had zero or one behavior referrals. So by and large, our students are spectacular at Decora, and they really do their best to follow the Decora way every day. One of the ways that we are trying to address that early on this year is by increasing our supervision right from the start. So staff are spending more time out on the playground and in the lunchroom to help support our students in teaching the basics. We have, you know, I think 83 brand-new kindergarteners. We want to make sure they know how to properly go down the slides. They're not clocking somebody at the bottom as they're sliding down really fast, especially on these fun, wet slide days. Also making sure that they just know how to play appropriately in the sandbox and what it looks like to be on the, who took the cookie jar, play on the playground. So having staff more present and available to teach that in the moment rather than waiting for incidences to occur. I'm not playing Foursquare because it would not end well for me physically, but I am there monitoring what Foursquare looks like so that our students can be successful with that game. We are also doing a mentoring survey. Many of you who were here last year heard me talk about that. So we're doing a connection survey to see how many of our students are identifying staff at the building that they feel connected to. We're hoping for five or more. Last year was three. We're up in our game. We want our kiddos identifying for five or more adults who they feel connected to. And then for students who aren't there yet, we're going to do some targeted mentoring with them with parent permission to have them feel more comfortable with the staff at the school building. And we have more staff typically than what we do students who need the mentoring, so that's a good problem to have. We'll also be doing a teacher's survey of students just to quantify that belonging in the classroom. How do they feel about their classroom? Do they feel like their teacher cares about them? Do they feel like what they're learning is new to them? Do they feel engaged and excited? And so we'll be doing both of those in the beginning of October to be able to start right away with it. And then another area that we are doing this year that is different and new for us is we'll be really targeting by grade level each month. The teachers will be looking at their grade-level data to say, what's an area of focus for us for this next month? And then communicating with the families about that so that there can be that communication and support between school and home. So that will be starting here. I hope we don't have a whole lot of data to talk about in the next couple of weeks, but we'll see where it takes us and then go from there. And then the pictures that I am sharing with you tonight, on the left, is all of our staff at Decora. On the 29th of August, we're all together for some time together and a lunch provided by our amazing PTO, so we got together for a photo. That top-right picture was my building leadership team in August really coming together around these goals that I just presented to you to talk about what that looks like and the importance of how we can act on that this year to make sure our students are learning to the best of their abilities with our teaching to the best of our abilities. And then that bottom-right photo is actually my first-grade team. Last week was working with my literacy specialist to identify what their coaching goals are for this next chunk of time. So that team as a whole is going to be working on conferring, which is when they meet with students individually to really learn about what the student is reading so the student can articulate what that looks like so that they begin to continue growing as independent readers.
Any questions?
I need to go so fast. I kind of got up here and just got rolling. So any questions or wonderings about what I presented tonight?
Nancy?
You didn't present on this, but this has been a hot topic for us as a board, probably for many employers as well. Could you speak to the number of openings that you have for paraprofessionals at your school or perhaps lunchroom or whatever you have open? Could you speak to those numbers to let us know? And then also maybe add how it might be affecting learning, obviously a detriment, I'm sure. But, you know, we'd like to hear that information from you.
I'm excited to share with you that I have been fully staffed since day one. I was fully staffed in mid-August, so it's been great for me. I can't, I know my colleagues are struggling.
Maybe your colleagues will have a different story.
My colleagues are struggling, and for that, I do feel their pain because I was there last year. So it is difficult. And I think what's really challenging is I actually reach out to my families at Decora because I feel as though some of the best employees are those who are truly, truly invested in the school itself. And so I've been really lucky to hire on a number of parents that have worked out fabulously for us, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I'm guessing Tristan's got, he's looking at you with a little bit of a, yeah.
You're the daggers.
Yeah.
Great. Other questions? All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next will be Tristan Hayes, who's the Principal of Fair Park.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you. Let me get my slide up here. We'll get started.
All right.
Brevity is not my strength, so I'm going to channel all of my strengths of being brief here with you this evening. My name is Tristan Hayes. I'm the Principal of Fair Park Elementary. This is my fifth year as principal there, so it is my honor to represent our amazing staff, our students, and our families. And it's really been an awesome ride. So fifth year, this is my 15th year in district. So good stuff. We're going to go right into my first one. Adrian talked about it briefly, and so did early childhood. This is really kind of our pyramid that we build on. We've talked about safe and secure. We've talked about effective and efficient. But we're going to build on these with each of the slides that I chat about today as well. All right. So I chose the super-busy Lots of Colors graph to Adrian's few numbers. So bear with me as I kind of walk through each of these pieces. So I took those same tests, and I pulled it out to kind of tell a story about the numbers that we have. Proficient breaks it up into these four different quadrants. You have our red, and that's our critical need students. Our yellow is our learning and growing. That blue is they've reached an area where the state has defined them as proficient, and our advanced is in the green. Now, you can read these numbers a lot of ways. I want to give a caveat that our first graders, the first bar is missing from that because in the first term of first grade, they don't give them the reading test. We allow them a little time to warm up to the progress of reading. They take the early childhood version so that those numbers aren't captured here. But what I really want to focus on is just a couple of spaces. When we look at our critical need, this graph shows an area of proficiency that's been built through very careful and very purposeful work by our teams and by the work that is done in our buildings. These numbers represent a lot more than just numbers. They're kids to us. We think, and we look about them, and we learn about them, and we react because of those things. So what I want to focus on here, as we talked last year when I presented to you, is our second grade really presented numbers. And when you look at that, there's a real space for critical need, especially where they started in the beginning of that year. We talked about the impact of the difference of learning styles and spaces. We talked about the impact of time. Well, this space had some very significant change, especially in those critical areas. And that is a testament to those teachers and the support staff. We started with that red quadrant representing 40%, and by the end of that year, we were down to that number in, sorry, 36 to 25 was the growth of kids in that critical need space. Moving a kid who's resistant and struggling with reading and convincing them it is a good process and it's worth their effort, that's a challenge, and I, again, really commend the staff that we have. You can see there's a lot of different stories that are here, some things that are concerning. I'd love to have more students in an advanced space. I'd love to continue to shrink those spaces where we're still in areas of concern in that yellow. But if we focus on those students of critical need, which we really did last year and we're going to continue to do this year, that's the story I want you to take away from this program. Very purposeful, intentional response to the needs of our students. Similar story, if we move on to mathematics. We do have our first graders take that right away, so they are captured in that first bar. And you can pull again any number of stories out of here. But if we look at, again, critical need students, that second grade, where again, the most eyes were on for a commitment of growth. This was my space where the second grade went from in that red box to 40% to 18% is how the numbers represented. And it's numbers that we're tremendously proud of. There's still a ton of room for growth, and we have a critical mission of urgency to make sure that all of our kids are in a space to be successful. But this graph should represent that growth. Right along. Okay. So when we talk about engagement and customer satisfaction, but also our adult engagement, the first piece on it I want to talk about is I have a picture of an old wooden stool. And when I think about the analogy of education, it's got to be a partnership. And a stool, to me, really represents that. We need to have three strong legs, at least, to make a stool work efficiently. To me, that's our school, that's our families, and that's our kids. And if we lay off on any one of those angles, there's areas of space where we're not as balanced as we need to be. And the idea of balance inside of this is captured inside of our title goal. Really, we're looking for renewed focus on our family engagement. We're excited for our doors to be open to our families in our building to really join us in celebrating the learning that's happening in our building, to really capture the idea and the essence of what we're hoping to do. Our teachers have done a Herculean job of maintaining that balance. But they've had to create it in sometimes a one- or two-legged stool, and that's reflected in the numbers I have below. The box in the way bottom, "Satisfied with my current workload", captures my staff's response to their current space. So people that have rated my workload as great, you can see those numbers have really suffered, especially last year where they were asked to provide some instruction, virtually some instruction in person. It was incredibly taxing. And I'm really looking, as a leader of our building and a professional leader of those people, to really find them back to that balance. So a lot of the things that we'll do will be that. We talk about life balance and work balance, and I think the analogy stretches in a lot of really wonderful ways. Like Adrian, I also included the response and how likely you are to recommend your building. These are people that said from 7 to 10, you've got to work a place. Where do you want to go? And 84.8% of people put a 7 to 10, which is incredibly high. Neutral being 5, 7 to 10 rating at 84% is something I'm really proud of. But I would love that number to be 100%. I'm really proud of the work that we do and the incredible results that we do with our children. And I wish that number reflected that, all part of balance that I'm working on for myself, too. Moving forward. So we talk about behavior. I included very little data. Instead, I hit you with a couple of paragraphs because I love reading. I broke up our student behavior and sense of belonging into three main categories. The first category in that is all students. And I see the first mission of my building is to reach all kids. All kids need to feel welcomed into our building. And hopefully, we've built tons of proactive strategies and practices to really make sure that we're building that for all students. We have clear expectations, a real focus on relationship, being good listeners, the amazing adults who make our building what it is. That's what's for all kids. But as much as I'd love to say it works for all kids, again, my number with Adrian's of kids that received zero referrals is 86%. 86% of our students know what to do and do it because we ask them to, and bless their hearts. We love having that there, but we know that that doesn't work for everyone. It doesn't work in every instance. The middle category represents some of our kids. We know some kids need more care. We know they need more care to feel connected. They need to be connected to the community. We know that when harm is caused, whenever we're in this space, we need to make sure that it's being corrected and supported. And that can be from anything of, they said they didn't like my haircut, and that hurt my feelings. And that's something to talk about in elementary. Wow, okay, let's talk about where you were. What were you thinking? How did that work? And that's really our life. I do love to mix it up in some Foursquare. Not that I'm good at it or that they need to see me sweat all over the place, but being involved and active is something that's important to help make sure that we get extra care. I have my cares team listed there. That's our school counselor, our school psychologist, and our family liaison. They're the backbone of this space. We've named them the Cares Room because their job is to provide extra care for the kids that need it. Lastly, there is few. There are a very small number of students who do need more support. And that layered support is whatever we can do to make sure that we can find a spot for them to be successful. And that's my job. That's my task to make sure those students have a way that they can participate successfully and in a way that all members of our school are safe and included. And I include a lot of words there because I can't help myself. So we're moving forward. I also have some beautiful pictures. If you direct your attention to our bottom-left-hand corner, I told you it was my fifth year being principal. My first year, those kids were kindergartners when I was a kindergarten principal. Now they're all grown up, and they're my fourth graders. So they've been with me as their principal for their entire Fair Park career, and I'm celebrating them now as I'm a fourth-grade principal. I guess that would make five years. On the right, you see a current crop of kindergartners, and they're delightful, and their smiles make our day at Fair Park. The top represents other students. But that really is our critical mission, to meet the needs of these kids and watch them grow. For five years, I've been with those students that you see in that bottom-left-hand screen. I know so much about their lives, and I can celebrate so much growth that they've had. But that growth, from kindergarten all the way up, representing five years of their life and mine, is something that I'm here to celebrate. I appreciate your support. Any questions?
Same question. Same question about staffing.
Sure. Currently, I have one open space. I'm looking... I'm looking for one parent support professional. I have an interview coming in on Wednesday, so I'm ready for an amazing individual to walk in the door.
Kirk, I'll just comment from being in your school. You exude the energy and passion, your teachers have energy and passion, parents and students' involvement. I love how you don't settle. You try to include everyone, bring everyone forward. I love your graph of the red line going down, so I just want to appreciate the work that you and your staff do and the kids and the parents of your school. You're not in the prettiest building, but you have the energy to overcome any...
Well, thank you, Kirk.
Any of that.
Great.
I think we're beautiful.
Yeah.
Maybe just the warmest building.
Some of those rooms, yes.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Tim, we're on with this.
All right, we move on then to our next report, which is Student Behavior Report, and I believe Elmi, Emily Melstrand, I'm sorry, Emily, Director of Student Services, is going to walk us through this report. Good evening.
All right, good evening. Let me see. Oh, boy. Can't see. Tim, do I need to minimize this?
You're the next one, Emily.
I'm sorry, if I put my glasses on, I can't see, and without them, I can't see. No. I was up here, though, I saw it when I was sitting back there. Let me see what, oh, it was hiding. There we go. All right, thank you for your patience. So, good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for your time this evening. My report tonight is intended to be responsive to the requests from the board to engage in a deeper conversation around student behavior. So I have to apologize in advance because, you know, Tristan just said being brief is not his best skill set. I think he's better at it than I am. I have a lot of slides and I'm going to try to work through them pretty efficiently, but I really wanted to be comprehensive in your request and in honor of the community's request to learn and understand more about our student behavior. So as we're working through this, I very much appreciate if you're able to take some notes or think about areas that you'd like us to dive deeper in in the future, or unanswered questions. I am happy to adjust this format as we move forward. So just to kind of overview the report for this evening, I am intending to highlight five aspects of behavior, and there's going to be a heavy emphasis on really diving into the data that reflects what behavior looked like at our sites last year. So I am going to start out just kind of doing a quick review of the proactive strategies that we're looking at and that we're really holding tight to as a system. And then we're going to talk about disciplinary action and why we discipline. We'll review behavior, we'll talk about system alignment and some of our goals and action steps, and then we'll talk about some of our next steps as a system. Okay. So just to kind of reorient, last year you had the opportunity to listen to each of our building sites present about their particular location, and they all talked very much about some of the proactive systems of support that focus on preventing behavior. So I know that this is familiar information to you, but I think it's really important that we do just kind of a quick review. So I'm going to talk a lot tonight about disciplinary response and the fact that that's a really important and necessary part of changing behavior and shaping student behavior so that they're able to meet expectations. But it's after the fact, it's responsive, and I think it's really important to always remember that targeting behavior is most effective when we're comprehensive and we're proactive in nature. And that's why you hear from our buildings again and again, the strong focus on the WBSD Way and all of the things that we do to set kids up for success. This visual that you see really highlights all of those different pieces to a strong proactive system of support. And you're going to see some things on there that I think are pretty apparent in terms of why they're so important. Family engagement. If we want to be able to set kids up for good success around student behavior, obviously the family engagement component of that is necessary. The communication, the partnership around intervention and responsiveness. I'm not going to speak through every single one of these just for the sake of time, but I'm going to highlight a couple of different things. In addition to the importance of family engagement, the connections that we have with our community partners are really vital. We actually have phenomenal community partners in this community in Washington County that work alongside of us to strengthen the supports and services that we're able to provide to students who need more in terms of mental health interventions, and then wraparound services both to families and to individual students. Tonight, you had the opportunity to hear from early learning and from Fair Park and Decorah, and all of them spoke about their positive school culture and the importance of that. And I have to tell you, it really resonates with me every time I hear one of our building leaders talk about the fact that what's important to them is that children belong. Absolutely, children belong in our schools, and that feeling of belonging is really what drives their engagement. It's been really fun the last couple of weeks to see, you know, our football team doing phenomenal on the field, and you can see in our kids the excitement and engagement that goes along with that. And that comes from all different aspects of connectedness within our schools. So system-wide, you're going to hear all of our building leaders talk about the fact that one of our primary strategies is focusing on belonging and connectedness. And then I'm just going to highlight the system-wide approach because that's another area that I'm going to speak to quite a bit tonight, that, you know, in addition to doing great work at individual buildings, we really need to be thoughtful about how that aligns across our system, and that we're setting up really clear expectations that build at each level. We're setting up our early learning kids to be ready for the expectations in kindergarten, and that our kids, as they move through the middle levels, are becoming more prepared for high school. And that that's kind of focused on what I always, I use the term gradual release, in that we're teaching kids the skills and then giving them a little bit more independence so that they can show us they've learned those skills. And we do that incrementally throughout the sequence of school. Okay. So the purpose of disciplinary action, I want to spend just a couple minutes talking about this. So first of all, I mean, there's two real primary reasons that we discipline in response to behavior. Obviously, anytime we place a disciplinary action in place, our goal is to teach kids and to promote success in social and educational environments. So that's one of our primary focuses when we're talking about discipline. And most importantly, we're doing that because we want kids to be successful educationally and in their social settings within the school environment, and we want it to be conducive for learning. You've heard again and again tonight the importance of ensuring that our environments are conducive for learning, and we discipline and we apply disciplinary action because we're trying to maintain that and ensure that for our students. We also want to make sure that our disciplinary action is responsive to the needs of individual students. One of the things that we have worked really hard on over the course of the last six months with our building leaders is really targeting disciplinary action and remembering that although we have kind of a structure for thinking about discipline, and I'm going to talk to you about that, we also have to make sure we're responsive to individual students. We have to be thinking about things like age and maturity and developmental skills, and we need to be considering past history of disciplinary actions when we're interacting with a student who has been involved in some type of behavioral incident. We need to be thinking about how kids have responded to interventions and whether or not the interventions we've put in place have been effective. And then we always need to be considering any special needs or factors that a student may bring to the table. So in addition to having a structure, we're always trying to tailor and be being responsive to those individual student needs. And then I'm going to talk to you about our levels of disciplinary action, and that is highlighted in the next graphic. So what you'll see on the slide here is kind of a rubric or I should say a continuum, a continuum of levels of disciplinary action, ranging from level one to level four. And you're going to see if you read some of the just points along the side of that, that you start at level one, and those are behaviors that require redirection at a classroom level. So those are generally managed by a teacher or a staff member. The focus is really on correcting, teaching, modeling, and providing feedback. And then sequentially, you can see that as we move through those levels, that both the impact of the behavior on the environment and the disciplinary response is going to increase. Moving all the way down to where level three is really focusing on a highly intensive plan of support, likely a suspension, meeting with parents to design that plan because as we know, we need parents to be a part of that process. And then level four, where we might be looking at expulsion as a consideration and likely putting in place a pretty highly intensive plan. I do want to mention, you see the arrows moving through the visual in the middle. Sometimes that happens incrementally, where kids move through those progressive levels, but sometimes a behavioral incident on its own can progress a student and our response from one to four. So I don't want you to feel like the only way to move along that is step by step. Sometimes something happens that requires us to respond at a level four. Okay, so we're going to go through a data review, and Superintendent Wimmer, please jump in if there's anything that I'm not highlighting that you think is important based upon your notes. But we're going to talk a little bit about system-wide data, I'm going to break it down by level. We're then going to talk about some of the most frequent behaviors and responses to behavior. And then I want to talk a little bit specifically about those behaviors that we would identify as kind of a level four or at the most significant level of that disciplinary continuum. All right. I do want to just take a minute, I know that this is language that's familiar to most of you, but I want to be thoughtful about community members who are watching and we have a couple of new members of our school board, and I want to make sure that I orient you to this. So we use the language in our system of a minor behavior and a major behavior. And just to highlight, a minor behavior is really a behavior that's managed at the teacher level by the teacher, by the school counselor maybe, by a staff member in the hallway. That's the individual who assigns the consequence, communicates to the student's parents, and provides any follow-up support to the student. 99% of the time, minor behaviors are managed at that level. On occasion, there's an administrator involved in that, but we typically think about it as classroom-level behavior. Major behavior incidents are those that are handled by an administrator or the dean of students, sometimes by myself or another administrator within our student services department. But those are behaviors that rise beyond that level and require more targeted follow-up or feedback. And then expellable offenses are exactly what you would predict that to be. It's a behavior that could or will result in expulsion.
And in addition to school board policy, that's governed by state statute, and it's a very defined process for those. So our policy serves to further reinforce statutory guidelines on expellable offenses.
Okay. So we're going to jump a little bit into district data, and the first slide that I want to show you highlights minor and major behavior incidents over time. So you're going to see that this visual, I apologize, I can't figure out how to wear these glasses and see far away and of close. It stems back from the 1819 school year to last year. And what I want you to just kind of attend to there is the progression annually from year to year and the comparison. And what you're going to see, there's a couple of points that I just wanted to mention. You're going to see an obvious dip in 2021, right? And that was the year that we had a closure, so that makes sense in terms of the number of incidents. The following year, 2120, and actually, the following year, we had 1,200 kids who were still engaged in some type of virtual learning. So I think that that's really relevant because, and actually, I misspoke, I have to back up. The closure was 1920, so that was at the end of the 2020 school year. And then in 2021, we still had about 1,200 students who were learning virtually. And I think that's significant to mention because in the year 2122, we welcomed back, we welcomed back over 1,000 students who had not been in full-time learning since the spring of 2020. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Obviously, our goal is that the trajectory of our student behavior is trending downward. That's something that's important to all of us and that we're all committed to. So this visual is designed to kind of demonstrate for you, district-wide, when we look at all of our majors and all of our minors, how many kids had zero incidents that required an office referral? How many required one, two to five, or six and more? And I kind of align this mentally with that pyramid. We've talked a lot about that pyramid and the idea that most of our kids, about 80% of our kids, will respond to the typical everyday expectations and redirection. And then we have about 5% to 10% of our kids that are going to require more targeted intervention. And I love how Tristan visualized that where he talked about his cares team. Those are kids who need more in order to meet those school expectations. And sometimes we have kids who need really, really targeted interventions and supports to be successful, and we expect that to be between 2% and 5% of our student population. So I share that because when you look at our district-wide data and you look at the fact that we have, let me see, what do we have? Seventy, almost 80% of our kids falling into that category of one incident or less. One of the things I do want to highlight about this, and I'm going to dig deeper into this in a couple of minutes, this data includes all of our attendance-related behavioral data. So skipping class, tardy for class, behaviors that are identified as truancy are all reflected in here. And in a couple slides, you're going to see what happens when I pull that out, and really targeting the fact that we have some work to do in terms of supporting our kids to be in class and to be at school. And the secondary impact of that at times is a secondary behavior. So I'll dig into that a little bit deeper. So I wanted to include this visual because one of the things that I liked about this visual is it illustrated something for me that was really positive on last year. When I looked at the minor behavior incidents by month, you start to see a trajectory downward as we reached spring. And what that showed us is that our students over time were doing a better job following those typical day-to-day expectations. I didn't see the same trend in our major behaviors, but what I'm going to share with you in a little bit is I really dove into, you know, where are those major behaviors happening and who is responsible for those major behaviors? How many of our kids are engaging in those? So I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in just a minute as well. So we're going to look at data by level. What you see here is the exact same visual that I showed you just a minute ago, looking at the district-wide data, but I did this by level. So you're going to see elementary, K4 altogether, you're going to see five, six, seven, eight, and you're going to see nine, 10. And the key is the same, zero incidents, one incident, two to five, and then again, six or more.
And just a reminder, this includes all major, minor, every recordable incident.
Yes, it does. It does, and it also includes the attendance data, which to me is a significant area of focus as we move forward. Okay. So now what I'd like to do is I'd like to kind of break this data down by level and really look at what are the most frequently occurring behaviors? So at the elementary level, we went through all of the major behaviors and all of the minor behaviors, and I really just ranked ordered the top six in each of those categories. And you're going to see at the elementary level that physical con- And you're going to see at the elementary level that physical contact was the top of both of those. Now, a minor physical contact at an elementary level typically looks like we're outside at recess playing too rough, somebody was hurt, or there was something that became too physical and there's a correction. It doesn't carry intentionality. The major behavior is maybe a bit more intentional, but when I really kind of looked at that, very often that's occurring in a vigorous four-square game out on the athletic field where emotions are high and a student doesn't demonstrate the emotional regulation that we'd like. So that was the most common behavior in both of those categories. And then from a response standpoint, you're going to see the most common response to major behaviors and minor behaviors. And you're going to see that a behavior reflection sheet, and I shouldn't say reflection sheet because that's not consistently what that means. Working through behavior with the student, both at the major level and minor level, is the most often selected consequence or action in response to a behavior at the elementary level. And for me, when I think about developmental consequences, that makes really good sense because school, teachers, and administrators are working to help kids know the right way to handle situations. So that often includes reteaching. Sometimes it includes fixing the situation, going back and repairing something that's broken, repairing a relationship that's been impacted by a behavior. But you're also going to notice that school suspension is used that is generally aligned with physical contact-type behaviors that have risen to the level where an elementary principal says, "We need to have a big response to disrupt this behavior." There's a conversation with the parent and a plan put in place.
So I think an important part is that you have multiple responses to behavior. So while you're seeing that consultation, that conversation, like you said, that's handled consistently for every behavior episode, but it could be commingled with, not only did I talk with the child, work with them, but they also received a suspension, or they also received loss of privilege. It's concurrent.
Correct. So the next slide really highlights the same structure, but it's looking at Silverbrook, our 5-6 building. And you're going to see at this level, our most frequently occurring behavior at the major side and the minor side was disrespectful behavior. And then second to that in the major side is the aggressive threatening behavior. And I wanted to highlight that because what you're going to see in the next slide is you're going to see a little bit of a shift in terms of response to behavior. And I will tell you that you're going to see that out-of-school suspension and in-school suspension have increased and that they're happening more frequently. And most frequently, when those are happening, they're in response to aggressive or threatening behaviors or physical contact. And I'm also going to say something, and I'm going to mention this again later. A behavior that we saw increasing at our middle level last year was the misuse of social media that included some type of threat. And I think that that's really important, that we as a community and as parents are really monitoring that because we have kiddos who are 10 and 11 years old making statements online that we absolutely have to respond to and we will respond to, and not always recognizing the significance of some of those words. And I will share more about that in just a minute. So most frequent responses to behavior at this level, and again, it's the same structure as before and as Superintendent Wimmer mentioned, sometimes they're happening concurrently. You can see at this level, when I think about developmental progression, we're still teaching, we're still reteaching, but the consequence is also becoming more overt. So at the seventh and eighth grade level, again, same format, but I highlighted here for you, I wanted to demonstrate for you that you're going to see two attendance-related behaviors jump into the mix. So at this level, we're starting to see skipped class and tardy to class as pretty significant behaviors in terms of frequency of occurrence. You're also going to notice that the top behavior on the major side was insubordination, disrespectful behaviors, and physical contact is happening, it's lower in the list, but the number of times happening is really relative to the amount of kids in the building. So most frequent responses to behavior, you're going to see the same structure. And at the minor side, those were the four consistent responses used for minor behavior. So there wasn't actually a fifth or sixth. What I do want to mention here, though, is it's a little bit, you have to interpret this very carefully because you're going to look here and you're going to see, well, at Silverbrook, they have more out-of-school suspensions or in-school suspensions. That was at the top of the major list. So it could create the question, well, why are we doing that less frequently at Badger when we're seeing some of those behaviors present? And actually, we're not doing it less frequently. Badger actually administered 126 out-of-school suspensions, 127 in-school, where Silverbrook had 82 of each. But what you're going to see at Badger is they're dealing more frequently with insubordination and disrespectful behavior, which aligns with a response like a detention more so than an out-of-school suspension. So I just wanted to highlight that because I think that can be a little bit misleading. So the other thing that I did with our data at this point is I thought that it was important that we started to look at the impact of attendance-related behavior on that overall number. So you're going to see the light blue shows us how many majors occurred at that building last school year with attendance codes, skipping and tardy. And then the blue identifies how many behaviors occurred when we removed attendance codes. Does that kind of make sense? And then what I did is I took that data and I used that same format that I introduced to you earlier because I think it's important that we're able to see both of those side by side and the difference when we take out those attendance codes. And what you're going to see at the high school is that that difference is much more significant. The other thing that I did want to mention, and I think this is really relevant, when you think about that red box down at the bottom, you think about the kids who are struggling more consistently over time. I really dug into that, and one of the things that I think is important that we note is that 5% of our student population at Badger, which is about 45 kids, accounted for 53% of our total behaviors. And what that has demonstrated for us is the absolute importance that we're getting in early, that we have decision rules, and our administrative team has worked really hard over the course of the last six to eight months to say, what data are we looking at consistently throughout the year so that we're intervening and disrupting behavior as soon as possible? And I will tell you that already at the high school, we've met twice as a team to really look at, how are we going to disrupt behavior quickly and intervene so that that red box is shrinking and we're not encountering kids who are struggling again and again and again to meet the expectations in our school environment? So same set of slides for the high school, but I'm going to lead with this one because I actually pulled out the attendance-related behaviors from the top six lists. So you're going to see here that of major behaviors at the high school with attendance codes included in the blue bar, the light blue bar, over 2,800-plus behaviors, but when we took out the attendance codes, that dropped significantly. Does that make sense? So same set of information, what are the most frequently occurring behaviors when we take attendance out of that? If I leave the attendance codes in, that will take up the top three boxes. So where our top behaviors at the high school were insubordination, disrespectful behavior, disruption. And on the minor side, personal tech violation, minor insubordination, and disrespectful behavior. You can see, gosh, I'm sorry, I thought I was going to reference the physical contact, but that actually didn't fall into those top categories. But tobacco use or possession was one that is new at this level. So again, side by side, I wanted to be able to show you when you take out those attendance codes, you can see at the high school level, now we're looking at almost 90% of our students having one or fewer, one or zero behavioral incidents. And again, I think it's really relevant that when we look at that particular population, less than 3% of our students accounted for almost 50% of our total behavior. And again, I think it's relevant because it tells us that we need to be intervening quickly. Dr. Dolls pulled together a team twice already to start looking at that and building plans to disrupt behavior. The other thing that I think it tells us, and Tristan and Adrian said this, we have a lot of kids doing exactly what we need them to do every single day in our school So this is the same slide as the other levels, and this really looks at most frequent response in, I'm sorry, most frequent response to behavior. And again, I pulled attendance codes out. Okay, I have a couple more slides with data and then I'll kind of wrap up and give you a minute to ask questions and give feedback. I did think it was important because this is a topic that's come up multiple times and you've asked directly about this, so I wanted to make sure that I broke down for you those behaviors that included tobacco, alcohol, and drug-related offenses. So you can see as a system, last year, we had a total of 139 instances or offenses. And that basically means we wrote 139 offenses, and those are documented in our Skyword system. What that doesn't directly translate to is the number of students. So that included 105 students. There were 121 instances in our district. Sometimes that was more than one kid. So that might have been a situation where two students were found together in a bathroom in possession of a vape, that type of thing. So I looked at instances, offenses, and number of students. I think it's also important to note that sometimes a single incident had more than one possession. Sometimes a student was found in possession of both a tobacco vape and THC. So that's also represented in this slide. And I also think this is important to include because throughout the year, we're going to spend some time talking about this, but this directly aligns to the work that we're doing in strengthening and building our mental health framework and the substance use and abuse. And we've got some teams of people working on how do we really address this and support our learning environment so that we don't have drugs, alcohol, or tobacco coming into our buildings? Okay, so the last part of the data review, and I thank you for hanging in there with me, I know this is a ton, relates to those level-four behavioral situations. And those behavior, level-four behaviors are the ones that have progressed all the way down the disciplinary spectrum or continuum. And again, this doesn't mean it's been step by step. Some of these have literally been zero to four because of the incident that occurred. So what you're going to see here is we had 37 different incidents that we responded to where we identified a pattern of behavior or a single behavior that resulted in a pretty intensive response. Very frequent, well, I will tell you, almost in every one of these incidents, we either held a pre-expulsion hearing or a manifestation hearing, and I'll tell you what that means on the next slide. And from there, we made a determination about how to apply a consequence or a disciplinary action and then also a plan of support. You're going to see here that the different behaviors included in this slide included threats, tobacco-related, aggressive behaviors or fighting, drug-related, and then, I apologize, I can't see the bottom, possession of a weapon. And those specifically were a couple of instances of a student who had a, help me out here. Thank you, but I'm trying to think of the other word, the small, I mean, they weren't substant, thank you, Superintendent Wimmer, that was not going to come to me. So I want to highlight something that to me is really important in this. In addition to the pie chart that illustrates the different offenses, I thought it was really important that we also highlighted who's doing this. And 86% of the kids that we sat at a pre-expulsion hearing for, or a manifestation hearing, or an expulsion hearing, were between the ages of 10 and 14. And that's significant. And this takes me back to the conversation that we had in July about at-risk and intervening and supporting students. And absolutely, when these kinds of things happen in our system, we need to have a swift and immediate response from a consequence standpoint and a disciplinary action. But I also look at the fact that these are 10 and 11-year-olds, and we got to figure out how to get them back on the right track because we want these kids to graduate from our school. They're going to stay in our community and we want them to be contributing in the best way that they can. I will tell you again here that one of the things that resulted in a frequent zero behaviors all the way to four related to cyber-based threats. So I'm putting that plug in because I think that's really important, that we're talking to our kids about the impact of your words on social media. So what was the response to that? This next slide kind of details that. In 21 instances, we had a pre-expulsion hearing, which is basically a review of all of the data related to a specific instance, and an outcome from that is determined. A manifestation determination is the legal process that we use when a child is identified as a child with a disability. We can absolutely impose a disciplinary response when a student has an IEP or a 504, but we're required to follow a legal process called manifestation determination. And what you're going to see here is that in 18 instances, students were removed from campus and an alternate learning plan was developed for them, either long-term or short-term. We're always working to get kids back in a place where they're able to meet the expectations of a school environment and that we can re-enter them safely. We're always going to prioritize safety of the learning environment in making those decisions, but we're focusing on disrupting behavioral patterns. And sometimes that's the decision that we have to make when these behavioral incidents occur. 19 of the times when we went through this, we put in place a highly intensive plan. Sometimes that plan included increased monitoring, sometimes it included different types of instructional support, much closer monitoring of what kids were doing online, bringing into the school, et cetera, et cetera. So we're getting close to the end here. Thank you again for your patience. This is really important to me that I also acknowledge this. When we are talking about level-four behaviors, we're often trying to determine using a really intensive investigation whether or not the situation warrants removal from the school environment due to concern for safety. And a process that we've worked really hard on district-wide over the course of the last year is putting in place a really secure threat assessment process. We use the information from the Department of Justice, and we've created a really systematic team approach for assessing and mitigating risk. So when a student threat occurs, when a student does something that's threatening and that information comes back to us as district leaders, this team approach to assessing that happens and that plays a role in what we do to intervene on behalf of that student or how we respond from a disciplinary standpoint.
And that can include threats to themselves or others.
Okay, so as we move into the next year and the next three years, this is a priority, you're going to see that You're going to see that we have a system goal that focuses on decreasing the number of major referrals, system-wide. And you're going to see that every one of our sites are going to come to you and talk to you about a safety and secure goal that aligns with this system process. We have a couple of primary strategies, and this is something I'd love to dive deeper into at some future board meeting. Today was really about unpacking data. But I want you to know that in addition to unpacking data and looking at data, we're really thinking about what do we need to do to impact that behavior rate so we see the reduction in overall behaviors. And I will tell you that, again, the WBSD Way is something we've talked a lot about. That focuses on the idea of clear and aligned student and staff expectations. It focuses on accountability and how we're holding kids accountable for behavior. Also focuses strongly on re-teaching and teaching behavioral expectations. And for all of us as a system, every building, we're really placing a strong emphasis on that idea of a community of belonging, because the reality is when kids feel like they belong, they're able to demonstrate their best skills. We're working on system alignment. So we've had a strong focus on those decision rules. And those are the data points that we're watching and monitoring to say, we have to think about intervening to disrupt behavior right now. Or, not always behavior, but I'm worried that this student is struggling, and maybe it's kind of a silent struggle, but we need to notice and we need to intervene. We are working hard around reporting and recording behavior. We've done an overhaul of our behavior codes, so they're aligned to federal and state requirements, and so that our building leaders and disciplinary officers are more calibrated in their response. That's also true of our disciplinary practices. That goes hand in hand with that reporting and recording. And then the other thing that we're really trying to leverage is a focus on the mental health framework and thinking about substance abuse and use, and how we can impact that. And of course, professional development, targeting, building the capacity in our system. I'll talk more about that at a later time. But in addition to professional learning, we do have a behavior coach on staff who is working district-wide to help all of our teachers feel like they have the toolbox they need to intervene, but then also jumping into those situations where we do need to disrupt behavior, and teams need some extra support to do that. So that was a ton of information. And I want you to know, we're committed to bringing more information forward on this subject throughout the school year. In November, I will be back talking to you specifically about seclusion and restraint data and plans around that. You're going to have site reports between November and February. Those are all going to include site data and strategies. We'll do a first semester review. So instead of talking about last year's data, we'll talk about this year's data. And then we'll do that again at the end of the year. And I am happy to do that at any point during the school year. Perfect timing. If there's information that you would like more, a more in-depth understanding about. So I very much appreciate that. I know it was a ton. Questions, information that you'd like me to take back to my team, or suggestions moving forward.
Go ahead, John.
I just have a couple things. So on slide 12-ish, 12 through, I think, 15, well, even further, 17, you go over the occurring behavior, most frequency, or most frequent occurring behavior. So in a couple of the categories, I see the top ones in minor and major of physical contact. So that's, let's see here, that's in K4. And then, I believe, 5, 6 is one of your top ones. You know, your top six that you gave us. And it looks like just those two younger grades or two younger class levels are seeing your top levels of physical contact. So how can it be a minor and a major?
That's a really good question. So at those early levels, a minor, a behavior is identified as a minor physical contact if it happens without intentionality to injure a person. So for example, at an elementary school, I see again and again, kids standing in line. We've taught how to walk and progress in line, and Kid B can't help but give the kid in front of him a little push to get him moving. He's not necessarily intending to injure the kid in front of him. He's trying to expedite the walk in the hallway. But we need to intervene.
Yeah, but he did intend to push.
He did intend to push.
So he did intend to put his hands on another kid. I'm just saying, are we giving the wrong, you know, are we setting the wrong precedence to these kids, allowing them any kind of minor physical contact? I don't think it's acceptable.
So, and I do appreciate your feedback. I mean, the other, there's so many small examples. One would be at the middle school level, is sometimes it's, I'm walking behind my buddy, and I've given him a flat tire where I step on the back of his shoe. I will tell you that if you've done that more than once, that's going to move to a major. But I would say at the elementary level, which is where you see it most frequently, it's often we're playing a game, and I've inadvertently either wrestled too much or gotten to be a little more physical than anticipated within the game, and an injury occurs. But I absolutely hear what you're saying in terms of, we have to take, we have to take physical contact very seriously when it occurs.
So was that the same issue with the disrespectful behavior? I mean, because I don't tolerate any sign of disrespectful behavior in my house towards myself or my wife, or towards either their siblings. So, I mean, is one towards kids and one towards adults?
So not necessarily. And one of the things that you're going to see as we move into next year's data, this is exactly what we've spent a ton of time doing with our administrative team, is really clearly identifying when is it a minor and when is it a major. And one of the differentiating factors, so I'll give you an example. Inappropriate language is one we see at both minor and a major level. A minor inappropriate language might be, I'm walking down the hall, and I'm speaking a story to my friend, and I'm using language I shouldn't have. It's not necessarily directed at a person, but it's still unacceptable. Versus, I'm using inappropriate language to directly target another individual or in an aggressive way. And that becomes one of the differentiating aspects between a minor and a major behavior. They both have a response, but it's just capturing the severity of it differently. I will also tell you that in our, in the work that we've been doing, we're also looking at, okay, if you've done that once, we're going to teach and correct. If you've done that again, or a third time, it becomes a major behavior.
Okay, so do we have, do we have a platform or a guideline to go through saying, it doesn't matter if you did this once, it was intentional, accidental, whatever, this is a major, this is considered a minor, or is it just at your discretion?
Nope, we worked, that's a great question, because much of our work, if you talk to our leaders over the course of the last six to eight months, this has been some of the work I've really been spearheading with my team. It's providing clarity around those decisions, so we have better calibration system-wide. And there are multiple behavior codes that do not have a minor category, because there's no minor when you're talking about that particular code. And we actually, and that's something I can show you in a side-by-side. What did our codes look like before? What are they going to look like moving forward? And that was some of the conversation. This particular behavior is never a minor behavior. It's always coded as a major. So yes, that does exist, and we can absolutely share that with you.
Okay, then one more thing. So on the response side of it, I see, you know, behavior reflection, reteaching, conference with parents on the K through 4. And then as you get out of the K through 4, which I appreciate the conference with parents. You get out of the K through 4, and some of the top responses do not include anything with parents. But, but on slide, I believe, 3, has, you state the proactive system of support and focus. How do we do that without parents? And you have parents and family engaged.
Yep, and John, let me clarify that for you. So first of all, anytime there's a major incident, a parent is contacted. So that's always a part of the process. At the upper level, a parent is involved in the planning. Anytime there's a significant behavior, like an out-of-school suspension, or I'm sorry, a significant response. And this kind of goes back to when Superintendent Wimmer was saying, sometimes things are happening, there's more than one thing happening at the same time. Every time a kid experiences an out-of-school suspension, there's a re-entry meeting. So parents are a part of that. They become a part of the problem-solving and become a part of the designing of a plan, if we need to design a plan. So I absolutely can appreciate what you're observing, because when you look at that list, it no longer says parent conference, but that's generally happening in context with a second response. So the administrator is no longer selecting, I brought the parent in, and we worked out a plan. They're saying it was an out-of-school suspension, and every time that happens, we have a re-entry meeting. And I 100% agree with you. If we're not engaging our parents in that plan, we're missing a huge part to really creating a plan that's going to benefit a student.
But I mean, it needs to be part of the minor, I think, you know, too. I don't think just only majors, you know, are parent-worthy. I mean, I want to, if my kid's screwing up in class, I want to know, because I can correct it a whole lot faster than you can, I promise you.
I think maybe to your point, that might be a good education piece. Education piece for our families, as well as our board, that the system will actually provide you, as a parent or guardian, that notification. So that might be a good thing to kind of give a tech tip in an upcoming newsletter for families, how to see that, how to look at that, monitor that, you know, for that consistent communication piece, because that has parent communication as well.
Absolutely.
For families.
Other questions from Melanie. Emily, I'm sorry.
I knew you meant me.
Sorry. The one that I had is, if there's an incident that involves maybe two things, and I'm going to make it up, physical contact and inappropriate language, maybe, is that counted as two? Is that counted as one?
So, very good question. It counts. We're always going to err on the side of the most significant behavior, unless it also includes a drug, tobacco, alcohol, or weapon offense. In any situation where there's a possession of one of those items, it's going to be listed as two distinct situations, two distinct offenses. If that makes sense. But, you know, and we calibrate through this, again, this year, we're spending a lot of time calibrating how we record a behavior. Sometimes one behavior could start as a dress code violation, turn into insubordination, and we're going to err on the side of insubordination in that situation as the more significant behavior. But that can absolutely happen.
Nancy.
Well, since you opened that little box there, let's talk about the dress code violation. So first one is a minor, or first one is just?
The first one is a minor. It's a warning, a minor. The third one is classified as a major.
And the second one is just what?
A minor.
So two minors, the third one is a major.
Correct.
And then what? I mean, so fine, it's the third time I wore a crop top. You're throwing me out of school for that, or what are you doing?
No. And I think that's an important piece when you think about those disciplinary levels. So a dress code violation would certainly not go to a 3 or 4 right away. The corrective response is probably going to be phone call home, we need a different clothing item, or we have things on site, and we're going to ask you to change. But it's not going to go to immediately, we're kicking you out of school.
Would you ever kick him out of school? So what if I'm that defiant, and I'm like, I don't care about your dress code?
Well, now, you've moved into insubordination. And that's a really important piece, is, you know, multiple times of not following a school direction, it becomes insubordination. And insubordination rises a little bit higher on that level. And it depends on what that insubordination looks like, and how-
So there is some subjective nature to it, obviously.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, we're working really hard to calibrate and provide better direction to our building leaders and our disciplinary officers. But as much as I like a really neat recipe, if this, do this, when you think about what I said at the beginning about being responsive, we have to look at all of the factors. We have to look at the age of the kid, the maturity. We have to look at, is this a student where we've had lots of disciplinary things, and we've been intervening? Or is this the first time, and there's an opportunity to disrupt the behavior right now and move forward? So it's being responsive to the student as well.
And I guess I would ask a follow-up question. So obviously, this is a hot topic for many of our students, and we've received multiple, multiple messages in regards to it, as well as people here tonight. So at what point, when you see such, I guess, drastic response to a policy, does administration then say, gee, we need to probably look at our policy and maybe have some kind of conversation about that? I mean, clothing is very subjective, and I would hate to think that we're wasting anyone's time running around with a ruler to establish how short a shirt is at a school, because that seems really counterproductive to education. So I'm just wondering, like, at what point does that happen? Or, you know, even for the smaller level, John's comment about, you know, pushing someone in the hallway, or, you know, giving, I don't think they call it a flat tire anymore, but I thought that was hysterical that you used that terminology. They did when I was like a kid 100 years ago. But, you know, at that point, like, you know, things have changed a smidge since we were in school, especially with the social media. So at what point then does that trigger some type of response to say to administration, gee, we need to look at our policy a little more closely?
I'll speak to, I have it in my report, around, speaking about the dress code specifically, and how we're supporting students in working through that in a manner. So I can speak to that then.
Yep, and I was actually going to reference that, but then I'll steal your thunder. I will tell you, just a preview, we're really working to focus on channeling some of that through our student council and really leveraging that group of student leaders to provide input into some of those decisions. So, but Superintendent Wimmer has that on the docket.
I just have something to add. So with all minors, is there a warning, a minor, and then a major?
No, there's not always a warning.
So I'm just, you know, in that instance, I'm just thinking, that is so many, just warning, warning. I mean, once you understand, once you're aware of a rule, you just, you can't just blatantly disrespect it and just, you know, go off-topic and just do what you want. I mean, that's just like, I got my license, I understand that's a speed limit, but I'm just going to do what I want? You don't get an option, the cop's going to write you a ticket, you know? So once you're, once you're made aware of a policy or something that's a new regulation, I don't understand why we have so many warnings with it. I mean, it kind of just shows, we're going to be a little soft with this, and we can-
So they're not always warnings, but it's also, again, going back. I hear you, and I want you to know, I mean, much of our conversation today was focusing on behavior data and disciplinary response. But the other element of that is really being responsive to individual kids. And sometimes, I think about some of our little ones, our first and second graders who are represented in that data, some kids get it the first time. You know, 80% of our kids get it without any extra teaching. But not every kid learns exactly the same. And I always think about, you know, the idea of, you know, when kids are struggling to learn to read, we're going to go back and reteach. And when they're struggling to learn math, we're going to go back and reteach. And we have to be thoughtful of that developmental sequence in that sometimes for some kids, especially our littles, it's going to take multiple times of reteaching. We still intervene with a consequence. And that might be a minor, and that might be a student reteaching or reflection. It might be a parent contact and a plan with that parent. But we're not going to give up on teaching it either, because all of our kids learn differently. So, but I hear you, I hear you. And we want the same things in terms of, we want our schools to be safe, and we want our schools to be conducive for student learning.
Other questions? I appreciate that you've outlined a series of upcoming board reports, and also kind of set the foundation for it using all the data today. And also, you had the slide on primary strategies. You talked about perhaps presenting some information on that sprinkled in as well. So this would be an ongoing topic.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your attention. I know that was a lot.
Thank you for your time. All right. Next is the employee engagement report. And Lenny Hansen, our Director of Human Resources, will walk us through that topic. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just scroll through here as we go. I don't know if you want to pause or keep going. It looks like we have a few restroom breaks, but that's okay. We can keep going. So we come to this time each year where we take a look back at all the employee engagement data that we have collected. And I'm going to try and give a synopsis of that in as brief but effective a format as possible. So I actually have a few slides here that, just why we measure engagement, those sorts of things. And to be very honest, I didn't change them from last year. And the reason for that is that the reasons engagement matters doesn't, don't change. It's been one of the most studied things in the entire world that engagement of your employees leads to positive impact on your organization and in our case, on students. So, you know, the presentation is, you know, has several statistics and things like that that are worldwide that demonstrate that importance, but I think we've talked about that several times in our history. But I provide it there for background information for individuals as to why engagement is so valuable. So engagement for employees can be measured in a lot of different ways. How do we do it as a school district? So we have a lot of different measures that we'll use. We have an internal engagement survey that we're going on several years now of using. We are also in the second year of using a survey tool called the Wisconsin Educator Development and Support and Retention Survey, which is administered by UWM with statewide comparables and statewide support from DPI. We've had excellent participation in both of those surveys for two years in a row. Well, actually, every year we've done them, but for the UWM survey, we continue to have really strong participation. We look at our employee turnover rates, which we'll look at shortly, exit interview data, and then we look at our absenteeism information. So a lot of different data points that come together to help us there. So some general trends as we look at our data here. The first one is that the timing of our survey definitely was impacted by some other factors. So it was our internal survey. So it was good that we had that second piece to look at. Our internal survey happened to align with basically the peak of COVID absences, which was certainly the most stressful time of the, probably of the last year for sure, possibly the last two years for our staff. But then the UWM survey actually showed quite a variance from our internal survey, which was not the case the year before. So we are thinking that some of that was impacted by the nature of the timing of when it took place. We looked at, there was a lot of workload impact this past year from staffing challenges and we'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. We also saw that there was a major shift in the reasons for teacher resignations, which we'll analyze as well. And then also want to bring attention to the fact that COVID related absences were actually much higher last year than they were the year prior, which also impacted a lot of the feedback that we received as well around teachers having concerns around workload, ability to, you know, support the continued operations of the school. Some other trends that we saw, we saw the teacher collaboration continued to be above the state average and we get a lot of that comparable data from that UWM, WDSR survey. Our job satisfaction rate is in line with state average, but being in line with state average really isn't good enough for us. So it gives us some targets that we'll be talking about. Support staff turnover continues to remain a challenge for us. And then in general, the data indicates that staff expect to remain here and that the data, on our turnover data collection seems to echo that belief. So some of the highlights that we can pull out, because I could talk about this forever, but I'm not going to subject you to that. So some of the highlights that I can pull out, first of all. Employee manager relationship had several strengths last year. And then there continue to be several strength areas there as well. And I highlight some of the big pieces there. You know, there, on all of these questions, a lot of times there's that kind of disagree, that agree, and then a lot of times that right down the middle kind of neutral response. And where we see a lot of opportunity is we don't have a lot of people that will give a negative disagree or strongly disagree response on questions. But we have a lot of people kind of ripe for the plucking in the middle there who are neutral that we'd love to nudge over on a lot of our categories. So, you know, so for example, that second bullet point, only 10% indicated dissatisfaction with communication from their supervisor. We also have a lot of people in that middle group that we'd love to nudge over to join the 65% or so that were satisfied with it. Receiving feedback, people demonstrated good satisfaction with the, you know, ability to resolve matters in a timely manner. You know, we are going to continue to work on, but we're operating from a position of strength as you can see from the data that you see there. As we said, teacher collaboration, staff collaboration continues to be a strength in our district. That was the case last year and that continues this year. I put some of the highlights from that survey that you see there. But, you know, the top point is one I really, you know, find a lot of pride in as a district that, you know, more than 10% above the state average in terms of staff working together to develop lessons and work on strategies and instructional materials. You know, our staff very, you know, seem to have a higher level of trust than you'll see across the state average and we feel that yields positive results for our students. Under job satisfaction, so this is where you capture a lot of the different data points altogether, right? And how does that general satisfaction rating? So I kind of put here, you have two different data points. The top one is from our internal survey and that second one would be from the, that second survey. And you can see how there's a difference there and that's what I was kind of referencing earlier in that we definitely saw a little bit of a shift depending on the timing of the survey. Either way, there's positives there, but there's also opportunities that we're going to talk about in a little bit. And then again, referencing the retention data, which we'll talk about in a little bit because staff did indicate that they expected to return to the district in large numbers and they did. So as we look at staff retention, so I'm going to start with certified staff or teacher, teaching staff you might think about. So we, I have this graph, I brought this graph last year and I've updated it for New Year's data. So the blue line represents the Westman School Districts. This is retention, so you want to be high on this scale, okay? This isn't turnover, it's retention. So we have continued to be above the state average in our retention, or I shouldn't say state, the Southeast Wisconsin regional average in terms of our teacher retention. But you can, as you can clearly see, that narrowed to almost being equal. So we were, we're now in about the same spot we were two years ago. Certainly, we like the pattern of being consistently above the norm, but, you know, we are watching very carefully for, you know, are we going to continue in that, in that pattern? As you can see, we declined in our retention for the first time in four years. The state saw a decline as well. We've all read about it in the news about the difficulty retaining and finding teachers, but it's a, it's a real issue for us that we will be continuing to monitor. As we dig in, you know, teaching staff is one piece of the puzzle, support staff is another. And we continue to have real pockets of strength as well as weakness in this area. So aid retention is something we have really been working on. We wish we would have seen a greater, you know, impact from that. We were really at the same level that we were last year. But we also have several initiatives that we know are multi-year in the process in terms of improving aid onboarding, improving aid professional development and communication. That's a huge group. AIDS is over 200 employees here. So we have some strategies that we started last year, we're continuing to hammer home. Additionally, the, you know, the board approved some compensation adjustments for that group that we'll see how that also plays into, to that data. As you can see, it's very, from department to department, you see a lot of difference. Clerical staff really great retention rate, professional technical as well. Nutrition and facilities where you tend to see more part-time staff, we tend to see more struggle. So, you know, really, what that points to is that we need a variety of strategies that are much more specialized to the specific group than trying a one size fits all. So I talked a little bit about teacher turnover and how the trends are definitely changing. So I highlighted here, these are the reasons that were given to us. We pulled all of our resignations since the start of March, which is kind of like the start of the season when people start interviewing for jobs and moving around districts, that sort of thing. So the top one there is changing the profession or going private sector was easily the number one reason that people left the Westman School District as teachers in the past, past year. That is a big change and it's something that the school district needs to be in close attention to. I'm not going to, you know, repeat things that you've read in the news or things like that, but we all know that the ability to retain teachers, hold on to teachers, but also get people to go in the teaching profession is a challenge right now. The highlighted piece there, going to another district in Southeast Wisconsin, easily used to be more than half of the resignations, if not three quarters. That was just, you know, you're free agents, you're jumping from one area to the other. That's not the case anymore and we need to think about strategies that we can put in place to impact that. So those turnover trends, so as we dig in deeper, we really want to understand the situation so that we can get after it with the right solution. Teacher resignations, so of teachers that resigned, their median years of experience in the district was four years, okay? So we generally saw that with less experienced staff. And then that's echoed by those other two data points there, where 72% of those individuals had less than 10 years in our district and over half of them with less than five. So, you know, we need to ensure that we have strategies for retaining all of our staff, our very experienced staff, our, you know, kind of medium experience as well as our newer to the profession. But we are seeing a greater impact with our new to the district hires. Aid turnover, a similar situation is playing out, but in a much more rapid manner. So, you know, the median years of service for those aides that were resigning was one year. And as you can see, two thirds of them were in their first two years. So what we need to do is again, in our opinion, focus on that onboarding, training, communication so that once people feel comfortable, they do not tend to leave, is what we found. How do we get them to that year three so we can hold on to them? So where do we see opportunities? There are all kinds of opportunities here. We've, and this is based on information collected anecdotally, collected from surveys, all those sorts of things. Obviously, aid retention, we've talked about, we've talked about custodial staffing. Certified staff creating pipeline opportunities so that we are able to replenish more effectively. Employee wellness is something that's come through quite a bit. We want to continue the emphasis that we started last year on high quality feedback for staff. And we also want to, a lot of the, a lot of the information we got from staff was around wanting to have a voice and having input into the decision-making processes within the district, within the school, but also just knowing where those venues are, right? Like the staff understand there are certain decisions that the administration or the school board is going to make, but they'd really value clarity on where those are. And I think certainly the COVID years created less clarity on that. There were a lot of decisions that just suddenly had to be made because of where the COVID rates were going, where, what the, you know, public health recommendations were. And maybe some of the processes we had in place for that staff input weren't as easily accessible. So how do we now kind of get back into the normal operating procedures that way? And then that time and workload management was a huge one that was brought up, you know, both from the side of, you know, having significant staff absences and the impact that has on workload as well as just outside of absences, just how do we make, make teaching a very, a profession that can be done manageably within, you know, the work week? So the next steps that we're going for. So I talked a little bit about that, you know, our satisfaction rate on our internal survey was at right around 66%. And I'm clipping in and out quite a bit, so I'm trying to stay here with the, with the screen. Our goal here is to get that up to 70%. Now, we're, we feel that's an attainable goal, but also rigorous. You know, we were able to attain that on that second survey, but really, really kind of leaning on our internal one, which has four years of data that we can look at longitudinally. Really continuing to, like I talked about, regrounding those decision-making processes, where those opportunities for input are. Over the past year and a half, Superintendent and I have started various groups that allow opportunity for input in new ways that didn't exist before, but we also know there's even more opportunities like that. So we'll be continuing with those efforts. Talked about the aid support piece, that'll be continuing as well. The administration with the board's support did some things around workload and time management around the calendar that are already going to be in place for this year in terms of trying to space out those planning, the times for planning and professional development and how they time out in a little bit more strategic way to make things a little more manageable for staff is probably the number one thing we've received feedback from on the survey over the last two years is the need for that calendar alignment with the workload of the teaching year. And then really an continued focus on staff recognition with some new efforts, but also relaunching our employee wellness efforts, which really have been on pause for probably five years, even pre-COVID. A lot of calls for getting those things going again and we've got a lot of that in motion already. And then that last piece, that internal pipeline development. So we need, we're a school district, we're going to need a lot of teachers forever. So if the normal routes of finding teachers are not coming through for us, what are some pipeline opportunities for us to achieve that? We have some support staff tuition reimbursement programs that we're looking at some expansion of. And we've used that many a times to help support staff get their teaching degree and then they come and become teachers for us. How can we expand that, promote that, build that more as well? And then even working with Mr. Tim Harder, you know, from the career and tech ed side of things as well as the academic career planning side of things, there's a lot of opportunities we can create for our own students, starting to create interest and opportunities in them that if they'd like to learn more about what it's like in the teaching profession, that we can create opportunities that way as well. So kind of the, the short-term game as well as the much longer term game and how we can start to really dig into those pieces. Compensation review for high turnover positions, you know, the board took a lot of action on those pieces related to support staff this past summer and hopefully there's impact there. Continuing to strategically align our compensation incentives, which both goes on a support staff as well as certified staff approach. You know, the board already took action this summer again on certain compensation pieces for certified staff to try and get after some of those high turnover positions. And then continuing that coaching and feedback training for our supervisors. And then again, the focus on transparent communication. You know, we've really tried to do our best with that throughout COVID and I think we've done a decent job, but we also know there's lots of more opportunity. And that goes with how we communicate about benefits and total rewards, how we communicate about the district's financial position, how we communicate just what work the board is doing and what work the administration and the district leadership team is working on. So there's no shortage of ideas. The follow-up communication, so you'll see a communication to you regarding employee engagement in a lot of different ways. The biggest areas are, you know, you saw some of our school reports today. So we have both fall and spring school reports that'll come before you and engagement is a key part of the strategic plans of those buildings. So you'll see them update you on their progress there. And then ongoing updates here before the board and in district news to the staff as well as the community around our district continuous improvement plan, which has a significant focus on engagement as well. So it's a lot of information in a short time. There's certainly slides there for people to dig into that want to investigate more, but wanted to give you that overview of what we've learned, you know, where we've got strengths, where we've got opportunities and where we're going next. So I'm open to any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes. Mr. Ongert.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. Mr. Hanson, obviously, the information presented tonight is perfect district-wide to be presented to the board. I'm curious, I know you mentioned the different school, individual school updates, but is this type of information available specifically for each school so that the administration and the administrative teams at those schools, you know, know what their data looks like and maybe how to address issues that may be specific to schools as far as engagement or satisfaction? Because I, I could imagine that it may be different at McLean versus at Badger, that sort of thing.
That's a great question. So the answer is yes. They have access to all of the data that we talked about on a school-by-school basis and you're exactly right, that it does vary greatly from site to site in terms of where the staff's mind is at, where their emphasis is at. On some of those slides during school reports, you heard about the building leadership team collaboration that took place in August for a full day for all of our teams. And all of our building leadership teams had the opportunity to at least begin their dig into their engagement data as well. Because getting after employee engagement and getting it where, you know, to the highest levels possible is not just the principal or the administration's job, it's a team job. Engagement is a team-wide effort. So they have access to all that data. It does vary greatly by site and they're, you know, tasked with coming up with a more individualized approach that can pair with some of the district-wide approaches that we have.
Perfect. Thank you.
One of the things that you spoke about that is extremely alarming would be the teacher turnover and the evolving trends. Now, I'm sure that you're meeting with other human resource directors across the state, but it's also a national problem with teachers actually leaving the profession for various reasons that, you know, obviously are various reasons. So what do you, you know, how are you collaborating with other HR professionals in the state or even, you know, on a statewide level to try and? or even, you know, on a statewide level, to try and basically keep teachers in the teaching field, or even to try and introduce teaching maybe to other professionals who, you know, hadn't thought of teaching before, but maybe now they could?
Yep, so you're correct, that it's, like you said, regional, statewide, nationwide issue. There's quite a bit of networking that takes place amongst HR leadership throughout the state, but it's, as you said, it's also bigger than just HR. The superintendents' associations are also together on this, there's different, and I don't know if you want to speak to those pieces, but, you know, from our perspective, we're looking at some of the shorter-term things that we can do. Shorter terms, some of the things like those support staff pipelines, which I would say, talking to other HR professionals in the region, we've had greater success or been more the head of the curve on getting our support staff to become licensed teachers, particularly in the special education realm. We've had a lot of special education aides become special education teachers here, whereas, and then our focus is, all right, how do we move beyond just special ed in that? Whereas, when I talk to other HRs, other districts, they're trying to just get anybody to do that. So we've kind of already taken that first step, and we've been doing that for a decent number of years. Now, how do we make it, how do we expand that, make it even bigger? That's one piece of multifaceted, you know, approach, but I feel like we're operating from a position of strength compared to a lot of places with that.
Also, we do work with the regents of the universities. We've been studying this trend, looking at this, creating opportunities, like you said, to reengage students with this being a viable career, it's something that they want to enter. You know, some of those things are around the conditions in which people work, the salary, the benefits, you know, the perception of the public around those pieces. So those are all things that have kind of involved and started impacting that pipeline negatively. So, we continue, and it's, again, as we decline in population too, we see that, but we've been monitoring with regents and other private colleges to watch the numbers just diminish and watch them go to other programs. So it's rebuilding the profession publicly as well, because I think that's really moving a lot of people away and understanding that it's viable. Also, promotion of and creation of, working with legislation to create licensure avenues. You'd be amazed at sometimes what a barrier that can be for people who are wanting to enter the profession. I once had a person who taught at the university level, all of that, but they weren't going to let her be qualified to teach my middle school Spanish class, you know, because of some of these barriers. So reaching out, working to strengthen those without diminishing the profession, you know, we've really stood, when we look at legislative pieces, to not have, you know, online universities where they don't even have to step foot in a classroom or do student teaching. We're really proud of, you know, the standards that we're holding here, so holding the line on that. But also, as you said, working with other agencies around the state, around avenues for licensure, who, if you've got a four-year degree, and how to accelerate that pathway in a meaningful way for talented individuals.
I want to echo what the superintendent said around not lowering the bar. So there's a lot of great, you know, creative people out there coming up with ideas right now. We need teachers right now in the classroom, how do we find, who, and that's great to have that, you know, solution-minded, problem-solving approach, but we have to balance that against, we have some pretty amazing expertise amongst our teaching staff here in West Bend that we're pretty proud of, and part of the reason we get great AP scores and, you know, great results in all these different areas, that we need to make sure we're continuing that anyone who we enter the profession through some alternative pathways, we're getting them all the, you know, preparation program that they need, so they can match that level of quality that we are very fortunate to have here.
Other questions? All right, thank you for your report, appreciate it. And we're on to our superintendent's report, Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. Just to tackle the dress code piece right away this evening, so the dress code is actually governed by policy, it's Policy 443.1. Student dress was approved June 18th of 2018 for the district, and that blankets the entire district, and it's got some flexibility in it for different levels in there. So then, the student and family handbooks that people receive kind of further articulates that, policy language isn't always the most easily-understood language. And part of the registration process, you sign off as a family that you've received that handbook, that information. Now, the new administration kind of looked at what were those expectations, how were they articulated, and that had come up through a couple of different avenues, and alerted families in advance of the school year, like, hey, this might not have been consistently filed in the past, but we're going to be looking at this, how are we going to do that? They've had a lot, as have we, of feedback from kids who have, you know, just trouble navigating those expectations, feeling inconsistent, talking about, so where is this line of expectation? What's the wiggle room since, you know, 2018, you had some student-stay fashions have changed? Where's the meeting run on that? So how do we handle that? So, in this and our analysis of this piece, doesn't require a policy change right now. So the high school had actually, kids were expressing that, at the same time, high school was approaching our student council group to look at that as more of a school governance structure. We've heard many students in, you know, the three years I've been here at the podium, speaking to conditions in their learning environments, all of those things, and they need an avenue that's no different than us in the chain of command, where's the point closest to them, that's right there in their building, and really pushing on and creating a spot for them to have adequate representation through that structure, as well as any structure. If they have any question, feedback, et cetera, they should bring it to the administration. So our administration had fielded some of those, they actually had called on that council, they have a meeting tomorrow with that group to talk through this, as well as, there's another agenda item. But it's my hope that they'll talk about things that impact their schooling, not just this, but we've heard things about exam schedules, all of those, where our students are very articulate and, you know, have really good intentions around creating conditions in which they can learn as well. So really partnering with them. So, I look forward to the students having a new kind of voice and sense of advocacy right at their school level. I know that between their themselves as individuals, their representatives, their executive board from their own student council, and the administration, I feel really confident they'll work together. Students who have reached out to me personally, I said, I'm happy to actually come to the table and help you navigate that work and support that. And because my liaison would be as the board, so when does this trip into a potential shift in policy, things like that? Again, I don't see that we're in that territory just yet. And I was also asked, okay, so when does the board periodically review? We're in the 300 series still, so the 400 series comes after. We certainly set that up for periodic review, but if something from their work at the school level makes us question or look at, does this have policy implications, the team would put that on a policy agenda for conversation. So I'm confident as they kind of figure out some of those kinks around the expectations and questions that they have, that they'll be able to work towards resolution. We certainly don't want people running around chasing kids for, you know, I raised my hand and my shirt wrote up those kinds of things, like, and we don't want kids' perceptions to be that they're being targeted by, you know, gender, by different pieces. So, again, the expression tonight will make sure that that hits the feedback there. I've got a fair amount of feedback from students and families via email, I'll make sure that goes to the table for their conversation as well. I'll serve as a liaison to the board, I'm sure I'll be speaking to this at our next board meeting, as will our student reporters, will be coming back, so it'll be an opportunity to engage in discussion there around that too. Any immediate questions around that? Like I said, that first meeting's tomorrow, so I'll make sure and include an update, and we'll make sure and include updates. They've been consistently updating both students and families at the high school level too, so we'll make sure that they continue communication through those avenues on that topic. Almost the same topic around student advocacy, or when they'd like to see change. I met with a small group of students who had been working across other districts and looking at how they kind of take the concepts of district nondiscrimination statements and what that means, and put it into student-friendly language, how is that reinforced? How could the district make a different statement that's less policy-legal language around, here's what we tolerate, here's what we don't tolerate, like, consequences occur, that kind of thing? It was really around behaviors, really specific towards hate speech, bullying, harassment, all of those, and then just unpacking that statement in that context. So, I'm going to work with that small group first, they'll bring that to their representative groups, they talked about some community commitments at their schools and what that looks like, so helping them work through those channels. So again, I'll keep the board just advised around their progress on that. And I know we can certainly revisit from a policy perspective, like, how do we unpack that language, which is, like I said, a very legal definition, how do we make that accessible to students at all levels? So, and they've provided some good research and some samples from other districts, so I'll make sure and gather those and help inform their work as well. In addition to those pieces where students are working together, just a reminder, we talked about safety quite a bit, leading into the school year through our behavior pieces, but Chief Deering posted a message to our families, we reiterated that in our communications, just, you know, it's a time, as school starts up, for, to watch for pedestrians, to watch for our students, we're thankful for our community. But also, that family connection, we've talked about kind of resurrecting some opportunities for families to gather and learn a little bit more about social media, how they can effectively monitor that at home. You've heard that, you know, that infiltrates into the school environment and those pieces, so we're going to be looking at those opportunities ahead, and I'll keep you advised of that too. Some really amazing celebrations, West High School Football broke a multi-year streak, and now has a new streak with having wins. Both of our football teams are doing great, East only has one loss as well, but it was great to see West to have a win at home, a win on the road, and like you said, the impact that it has for kids and our community has been really fun to watch, that excitement. Thanks to families who are sending littler ones to the games to attend with them, or to be mindful of our middle schoolers following expectations when they're at those events too. There's a lot of milling around, a lot of what we would call horseplay, we really have to reinforce those things. I know that they're doing that at the school, we'll make sure and put that out for families as well, because our, probably one of our biggest games on the calendar is October 7th, is Homecoming. That whole week will be filled with fun events, there's a parade, there's the game, there's the dance, so just mark in your calendars for those pieces. And just a reminder that the athletics department has switched over to the ability to pay online. A lot of families are purchasing the Family Pass, which is a great deal, it covers you for all those, so just visit our wbe-suns.org or wbwestspartans.org for all of that information, those updates. We talked about staffing shortages as well, I know I said it on my radio spot, on behalf of us or anyone in vicinity, you know, there continues to be a busing shortage, I'm navigating in this immediate area, there are actual school routes being canceled, you know, there's a little bit Southern District, 18 routes being canceled. I am so thankful that I have our routes covered. With that said, it's still a situation in which it's restrictive of our flexibility. I need a larger subpool, I need people on deck for athletics and extracurriculars, so that I'm not having to pull kids out of school early. So for anyone in our community who's interested, Go Right Way supports all the training, the certification of that. Maybe you're retired and you want to pick up just an odd job, or maybe have that flexibility to say, yeah, I can sub this day, but not that day, really reach out to us, because again, as grateful as I am to have routes covered, I really want to get us to that point of flexibility, so that kids aren't pulled so early, or I'm not worried on nights when I'm seeing peak illness and things of that nature. So, those are some of our highlights district-wide, and I'll continue to keep you informed on some of the issues that have come forward tonight as well.
Questions for the superintendent? All right, thank you for your report, we'll move to discussion items, and the first one is student travel, out-of-state travel for wrestling and dance, and I believe, I was thinking that Dr. Reese was going to cover this, but welcome!
I'm here to introduce two of our coaches for West, so we have the opportunity for both wrestling and dance to travel out of state. So first, you're going to hear from Coach Aaron Spath about wrestling, and then you have Coach Julia Palmer for dance.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for taking some time to preview these requests. We have for West Bend West Wrestling, two separate requests for out-of-state travel. The very first is titled "The Dan Gable-Donnybrook Tournament." Dan Gable is one of the most historic wrestlers in United States history. This is his only endorsed tournament, just outside of his hometown of Corahville, Iowa, which is just, I mean, 10-minute drive to Iowa City where the Iowa Hawkeyes wrestle. We have two separate itineraries, one leaving Friday morning and one leaving Thursday evening. It's looking more and more like that Thursday evening after practice would be the more logical transportation that we will go with. We have hotel arrangements, we have the event schedule. This event ran last year, it is one of the most raved around wrestling tournaments in the area. Teams are coming from Minnesota, Missouri, Illinois, there's one other Wisconsin team, but we got invited and we really hope to take the opportunity to attend. Any questions about the Iowa, we call it the Dan Gable Tournament?
Ongert, just how many wrestlers would you take?
So, 10 to 12 wrestlers, for two to three coaches, and then we're looking at the extent or of hopefully bringing in our two managers. They travel with our team throughout the entire year, they've been with the program. Most of the, we didn't bring them last year when we went to the Minnesota tournament, but as we looked around, almost every other team did, and we want to make sure that they are part of everything that we do, so if we can bring the two managers, we would love to. They help with the videotaping for us, they help with our statistics, and that actually does play into the state tournament series. If our statistics aren't correct, if we actually had 30 wins, but we only counted 28, that goes into your seeding for your tournament, so it can have a huge effect.
Just one more, I'm in favor of it, and you do have some, just for a reminder for all, we do have some state and nationally-ranked wrestlers as an additional reason to give them competition at a national meet, right?
Correct, yeah, we have, we have three kids on the team currently that are state champions, or have been. Our last state champion for West Bend West was in 1991. So, this isn't, you know, probably a forever thing, but at the moment, it's the right thing. I know, we had two state champions last year, they went undefeated in Wisconsin, but they both lost twice in our out-of-state tournaments, and honestly, that's kind of what we're looking for. We're seeking out the competition that we need to challenge all of our athletes, and we really do think that these tournaments are the right fit for them.
And just to reiterate, this is an invitation-only event, that's why you don't see kind of both teams participating in the same thing. This was an invitation, again, due to the talent that's present on your team right now.
Correct, yes, it's invitation-only.
My one request would be that you come back and tell us how the kids did, because I think we approved one last year, and I don't think we got that update from Ms. Felver, so I'm going to put it on you to tell us how they did.
You did, we, so that's actually the second one, we're also requesting to go back to the Minnesota Christmas Tournament. We did actually, there's, I think, nine Wisconsin teams, we had the only Wisconsin champion at that tournament, so that was kind of awesome. We did visit you guys after the wrestling season, and we had a historic year, we had five kids qualify for the state tournament, the most prior to that was three. We had four kids placed at the state tournament with two state champions, so trying to replicate that success, and we really do believe these tournaments will help us with that. But the other request is the Minnesota Tournament, it's the exact tournament that we went to last year as an out-of-state. It's December 16th and 17th, Rochester, and just basically right over the border, it's at that four-hour, very similar, we would get the hotels, I mean, all financial, we take care of it out of our activity funds. So, the only thing that we put in for a financial, I guess, ask of the athletes is if they want to buy their own clothing, like an event t-shirt, they're purchasing that, we're not, you know, we're responsible for that. It's not necessity, but if they want to. And then we do a team dinner after, we just say, if you, you know, bring money for that, and if they don't, we always have a team policy that we cover that, so really not a huge financial ask of the athletes. Any questions?
Questions? All right, this is a discussion item, so we'll see it come back next, but we've got one more to con- back next, but we've got one more to consider. I think it's a varsity dance team, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I am Julia Palmer. I'm the coach of the varsity dance team for West, and I am coming to you with a proposal for us to go to the Contest of Champions National Dance Competition at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in, I think it's pronounced Okiee, Florida, close to Orlando. O-C-O-E-E. I don't know how you pronounce that one, but that is what you do. It would be February 21st through February 26th. Right now, we have 12 confirmed dancers wanting to participate. We did just add a member to our team Saturday at our second round of auditions, so pending her confirmation as well, along with our two coaches. We would want to go to this competition to give all of our dancers a broader experience of dance. Right now, we just see WACPC, so the Wisconsin Conference of Dance, and especially for those dancers wanting to dance after college, being able to see dance and how it's represented from various states and have just a wider representation of the culture of dance, because right now, a lot of our dancers only dance and have danced just for Palm teams within Wisconsin. So being able to give them that more broader view of dance at Nationals would be very beneficial to everybody.
Questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to say I'm in support of this. I was on the dance team when I was in high school, so I know how fun and what a great opportunity it is. There was just one thing I wanted to ask, that it said all students would be required to see the school nurse prior to leaving to ensure that they are healthy. I would just ask that you make it not a requirement, but perhaps just like an option available if they want it, because you really can't tell if somebody's going to suddenly get sick after you leave, you know, if they're not showing any symptoms.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Other questions? All right, it's just a discussion item. We'll consider this for action at the next meeting. We appreciate the information. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Right. Our next discussion item is 2023 Employee Health and Dental Insurance Program, and Mr. Hanson's going to walk us through that one as well, assuming the equipment cooperates.
It's gonna. All about attitude. All right. So this is a normal item that comes up this time of the year, every year. It's really a combination of a work of a lot of different people. So what we're going to do today is try to sum that all up as succinctly but effectively as possible. So going to first do a quick summary around our District Benefits Committee, which is a new team that formed this calendar year. Then we're going to talk about health insurance, dental insurance, and then just a timeline, kind of moving forward on different decisions and things like that regarding that. So Benefits Committee is something we talked about last year that we wanted to get started, and we were able to do that, which we're very happy about. Benefits Committee represents different employee groups, so teachers, non-teachers, support staff, administrators, and represents all of our buildings as well. They met five times this year, and really, the purpose of the Benefits Committee is that they're not a decision-making body. I mean, ultimately, and they're glad about that as well. They, you know, they want to be there to provide feedback and give us tips on what, you know, how do you get the input from the staff you need? How do you, you know, what are effective communication strategies? But they also, they want it to be very clear. They're not a group that has said, yes, do that. They're there to provide a voice, but also a direction so that we can truly, you know, get a representative opinion on some different things, as well as just bounce around communication ideas. So that group met, as I said here, it met five times this year, can continue to meet probably every other month. They've given us a lot of great ideas on how we really get information out to staff and collect input. So we're going to start first on health insurance. So I tried to simplify a lot of these things as much as possible, use some similar slides from earlier this year. Again, our health insurance is really a three-part product. It's our medical insurance, stop-loss insurance, which we've had lots of discussion about this summer, and then our pharmacy, our PBM, our pharmacy benefit manager. All of that together, all those costs together add up to equal what is the health insurance cost. We've talked a lot of times about how we're a self-funded district that yields significant savings to the district, but also means that our costs vary from year to year depending on the claims experience we've had. We had a string of decent years in terms of that claims experience, and as I'll get to in a little bit. We've had now a string of months where, you know, it started, the pendulum swings back, as it always does, and now we're having a higher claims experience and needing to adapt to that. Health insurance, as we said, operates on a calendar year. It is by far our largest employee benefit, and I put some of the information there about the number of employees and individuals covered by the plan. You know, well over 80, pushing, almost 90% of staff do take our health insurance if they are eligible for it. We have several cost control strategies around healthcare that are in effect. I could go, you know, they're there for you to see. You know, our number one is always at the top there is our WBSD clinic. In the last year, we've added on Fast Care, which is another freighter option in the Meyer Stores that's open seven days a week as a free option for our staff. And the biggest, you know, highlight of that is when we look at normal emergency room and urgent care claims for a company of our size, we have way fewer visits to urgent care and emergency room, to the degree that the clinic basically pays for itself in terms of those deferred visits. Obviously, we're making assumptions that the reason we're so below the norm is the clinic and Fast Care, but I think that's been a safe assumption. The clinic provides great value to our staff as well as to the school district. Pharmacy coverage, recent board meeting, the board approved, you know, renewing with OptumRx for three years. We have a bidded and negotiated savings of projected of, you know, close to $300,000, but that'll be obviously dependent on which medications are filled and that sort of thing. We have several programs that incentivize consumerism. Then we have a number of supplementary programs. We bring in a mobile mammogram unit each year that is heavily used, puts us really above the norm in terms of a lot of preventative screenings. We have a lot of other incentives for some preventative pieces as well, like flu shots and those sorts of things. So we could talk about those things a long time, but in the end, we want to get to where are we heading for the next year. So during 2022, what are the trends we're seeing? We are seeing above-normal claim levels, and that, like I said, that's that pendulum swinging. We, as we talked about this summer, had a very high stop-loss insurance renewal. That's also due to just the claims. It's due to what sort of medical conditions or pharmaceuticals individuals in our plan happen to be using. You know, we're glad that those life-saving opportunities are provided through the district, but they come with a cost, and we saw a significant, as you may recall, 35% increase in our stop-loss insurance. As part of that, we are seeing increased usage of pharmacies. So certainly, we're looking at getting better prices per drug on a lot of things with our renewal, but the usage of medications is up, more so not in the volume, but in the usage of high-cost medications. And again, that's very specific to the types of needs that, you know, the individuals on our plan have. We are seeing increased usage of HRA rollover. We believe that's partially due to these increased claims, but also partially due to less healthcare usage in 2020, when everything shut down, is now swinging back as well. A lot of people who had to delay procedures or appointments, things like that, that's picking up again, so we feel that is probably a large reason for that increase, but working with our benefits consultant, we expect that continued high usage of rollover to continue into 2023 as well. All in all, what that means is we're falling a little short of our desired cost share from employer-employee on health insurance. We also have to take into account the various budget considerations as we move into 2023. We've talked about several times at this podium about how we're facing a third straight year with the same revenues on a per pupil basis, based on the state budget, something not seen in decades here in the state, and all school districts are feeling the pinch of. The 23 to 25, the two-year biennium budget is unknown and likely to be unknown until the summer, which puts us in a very precarious position, because we are halfway through the plan year by the time that budget is known. Post-pandemic health trends, obviously, every month is a new learning experience, right? Nobody, there's no playbook on how health costs respond after something like a pandemic and a closure and all those pieces. So there's still unknowns about that, that we have to be prepared for. The fiscal year, so we look on our, we look at our insurance costs, and really, when I say we, Mr. Sarno and his finance team in combination with HR, look at it both on a calendar and fiscal year approach, because we want to make sure that we're balanced in either, in either way of looking at it. So the fiscal year that we're just closing out, those did end up above our projection because of a lot of those high-cost claims that we talked about, things that are unavoidable for individuals if you're going to provide health insurance. But then for the calendar year for 2022, we're also above the initial projection, as we continue to see some of those high-cost claimants continue to have an impact. Ultimately, a conservative budgeting approach is necessary. With all those factors there, we need to make sure that we aren't, you know, presented with a huge surprise as we come to close the fiscal or calendar year, and we need to budget appropriately because of that. Our projection, so we talked about the 35% increase in stop-loss insurance, which the board is aware of already. We talked about pharmacy renewing for three years and hopefully experiencing a small amount of savings that way, and that number isn't small, but in relation to the total cost of healthcare, it is smaller. The general trend is always 6% to 8% minimum is the amount that you're going to go up on health insurance. Working with our benefits consultant, we are projecting to see that continued high use of HRA rollover. What that all adds up to is a 12% to 13% increase in total, in total insurance costs for the coming year. So this is where you get to the difficult part. We've tossed around a lot of different ways that we can get after that situation. Ultimately, working with the Benefits Committee, we've talked about that long-term, we need a comprehensive review of the health plan and to make sure that it's able to hit both the needs of our employees and their targets, as well as the district's sustainability targets. So what we're proposing for the 2023 year is some one-year solutions that are pointing towards that deeper dig, so that over the next nine months, we're positioned to do that comprehensive review, not to do anything knee-jerk that's going to take place three months from now, but to really analyze it, go to all the buildings, to meet with people, to collect feedback, so we can put together something that's sustainable long-term. The unfortunate part of that is there are some design changes that we do feel are necessary in order to bridge our gap as we embark upon that comprehensive review process, and these four items are here representing that. So the first is increases in premiums that are a little above what last year was, but more similar to what we saw two years ago. It's, we have three different plans that we offer. The reason for the range and increase in premiums is we've really looked at aligning those increases to where the employer-employee cost share is in relation to each plan. So each plan has kind of, is kind of hitting that target in a different way. So for example, our Plan One is closer to hitting that cost share. Actually, not close, it is hitting that cost share. We want to maintain that, so they have, that plan has a smaller increase in premiums, whereas our Plan Three is further away from that desired kind of 90-10 cost share, and we have a little bit larger increase in the premiums because of that. I put there, you know, that that 14% to 18% increase in employee premiums, that second bullet point, we know that that is not, that is not pleasant, it's, you know, for employees or anybody to have to deal with, but we also like to put that number in perspective. That size of an increase only reduces our total insurance cost by about 1 and 1/4%. You know, you can, you can work your way at those costs some with employee premium, but it takes a pretty sizable change in premium to really make a huge dent in health costs. And that's really why, long-term, we need to look at the entire offering and all of the different major plan design components. We are looking at then proposing a change in the co-insurance, which is currently at 90% to kind of a more industry-standard 80%. We wouldn't touch the out-of-pocket maximum number. We would keep that where it is so that the total possible liability that the employee has does not change, but the speed with which they hit it accelerates a small amount by going from that 90% to 80%. We currently have $100 emergency room copay. We've, through our research and kind of analyzed how that works, it's pretty out of the norm. Move to more of a industry-standard $250 copay would be the third piece there. The one, the fourth bullet point is actually a benefit to the employees in that we would look to expand our free options by, we already have, like you said, the clinic and Fast Care. We would add free virtual visits through a direct bill arrangement with a vendor, very low cost, but again, provides that kind of right place, right price, right time care option. Again, the more we can defer people from making a very costly visit, and sometimes even the primary doctor or a specialist where you don't need to see one is a costly visit, not just urgent care and emergency room. Adding virtual visits to the menu is very low cost, but you know, you, if you defer a few of those higher-cost visits in a year, you're more than going to pay for that option. So we think that's a worthy piece to add to the menu for employees, as I talked about right here. That longer-term plan, because again, we're, believe it or not, talking about January 1st, 2024, when we talk about a redesign, we're really trying to look at the long game and how do we get something to, you know, a really long-term sustainable spot. It's time to do this deep dig. We haven't done, as a district, that deep comprehensive analysis of the plan design in 10 years, which is really when the current plan design was implemented. There's been a lot that's changed in the insurance market in that time. That's only shortly after the passage of the Affordable Care Act, so there's lots of things that have played out since then as well. It's time for that. So the Benefits Committee would be involved in helping us to communicate, helping us to collect feedback, best ways to collect feedback. But again, both myself and Mr. Sarno would be doing ongoing site visits, ongoing communication to ensure that we're able to get information out as well as collect information in. We have a very multi-level communication plan around that, but really, our goal would be to know the framework for whatever the new or revised plan design would be by the next summer, so that there's plenty of time for individuals to be prepared and communicated with regarding that. So that's the health insurance piece. I'm going to jump to dental, and then we can come back with questions on that, because dental insurance is a little bit shorter discussion. So overview again, just like health insurance, dental insurance is self-funded. We use the Delta Dental Network for that. It also operates in the same calendar year for the plan. It's open to part-time employees, too, but part-time employees have to pay the full cost. And we actually do have several that take advantage of that opportunity, because it's a pretty good plan. Trends we've seen, we are seeing continued increase in usage, big jump post-COVID for similar reasons, but maybe exacerbated. Nobody went to the dentist right in 2020, right away when the closure happened, so dental costs really plummeted short-term, but that led to a jump later, and now you're seeing the cavities and things like that from people who didn't go back, and that's what we hear from our benefits consultant. I'm not giving my own opinion on that, that we are, that in general, dental claims are up as a lot of people didn't return to the dentist after the closure. We have actually held the line on employee premiums on dental for six years. The district's costs have continued to rise basically annually by a small amount each year, but we've held the line on that. We're looking at another 5% projected increase on dental insurance, and when you're looking at how we're going to close those costs while having some of those budgetary considerations I talked about sooner, you're very limited in dental. You really have three options. You can restrict the network to try and drive people to less expensive providers. You can increase deductibles, or you can affect premiums. So not as many levers to pull. For the, our 2023 projection to close that gap on the 5%, to help us get to that point, we are not going to change, we are not proposing to change the network. People like going to the dentist they have. They're generally willing to pay a small amount more rather than have to change their providers, and also not adjusting those deductibles or out-of-pocket pieces. But what we would be looking at doing is breaking our streak and having a small increase in dental insurance premiums, as you see there on a per-month basis. Timeline that we're looking at, so I have some of the timeline that's taken place before now. I put the dates of all those Benefit Committee meetings, our presentation today. We'd have an eye towards board action by October 10th, because that then allows us to get set for November's open enrollment, which is actually a pretty quick turnaround in the benefits enrollment world for a plan year that would start January 1st, both on dental and on health. You know, obviously, having to increase costs is not something that anybody wants to have to do right now. We know that the pressures of inflation, as well as several other things, and making, you know, things tight on families, as well as the school district, right? It's a difficult situation all the way around. Hopefully, the proposal here keeps us, it's a very competitive plan, which we're pretty confident it does based on the comparables that we've looked at, while also helping us keep ourselves in a fiscally responsible position. position. So again, a lot of information, but ready to answer any questions that we have.
Melanie?
I was going to ask, are the trends through other districts and other, I mean, you've probably talked to a lot of insurance companies, are they trending upwards in the amount that the employee has to pay all across the board? Is that something that...
Yeah, so our cost share is probably more favorable than, not probably, we've done the study, our cost share is more favorable than, as we all know, than the private sector, right? It's one of the benefits that we try to have to entice people to work in this field. But compared to public sector too, we're in a pretty good position cost-share-wise from a comparable side. In terms of where other people are trending, so I say that normal is kind of 6% to 8%, and in any normal year, certainly, we're hearing that more people are at least trending on that 8%. Our experience is, what's pushing us above that is largely tied to the specific claims that we are seeing. Like I said, that pendulum swings. You have certain years that you have a healthier population, in certain years you don't. And honestly, I don't even want to call it healthy versus unhealthy population because it can be a small number of people with very expensive conditions that, again, we're glad that we're able to provide that life-saving care. But that can dramatically impact your cost, and we are seeing an effect, both I would say of increased usage in general as well as some of those really high-cost conditions as well. But yes, I would say that insurance costs, like everything else, are going up. Inflation impacts the doctor's office in the hospital, like everyone else. Doctor prices for even just your primary care provider, they're driving up their prices. It costs them more to buy a tongue depressor and everything more expensive than that, right? So unfortunately, the same squeeze that's on every family in our country is also on providers and employers. And unfortunately, that creates a challenging situation.
Excuse me, other questions? This is good information, also a discussion item, so we'll see this on the next agenda, next board agenda. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we move to the 2022-2023 budget update, and Mr. Andy Sarno will walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer, I do appreciate the opportunity. Back in August, we had discussion and then action-taking, bringing forward the agenda, the resolutions, the actual language that was being brought forward, the board being in support of bringing that language for the constituent approval on the 26th when we have our annual meeting and the budget hearing. What I wanted to do, and I appreciate the comments last time, John, filling in some of those blanks. And we are still working through some things. Again, on October 14th, new information will become available through the Department of Revenue, the Department of Public Instruction. This Friday is the third Friday count in September, which is one of the big days because students drive our revenues. We have a revenue limit multiplied by the number of students on a three-year average. So there's a lot of information going forward. But as we're finalizing the information, I just wanted to share, and again, this was published publicly in the budget book for this evening, but unchanged agenda for the meeting on the 26th, registration at 6:00, public hearing of the budget. So I'll have about a 30-minute presentation sharing some of the budget highlights, some of the other requirements based on statutes. We'll have our annual meeting then, where we have a few resolutions allowing the constituents of the district to vote on three different resolutions. One of the ones that I wanted to point out this evening, again, just for informational purposes, nothing needed. This is just for discussion. Our next meeting, this will be brought forward to the community. But pending a large new piece of information, we have to finalize this. It will be in the newspaper. It's slated to be on the 16th, 10 days before the meeting. We are meeting with our Baird representatives, make sure we're measuring twice, cutting once, just making sure that we have everything captured. So spending some time with them tomorrow, getting this to the newspaper by the end of day tomorrow. But I have those different levy amounts filled in. So one of the things that we need to point out, the levy is going to be going down, the actual overall dollar amount. It's anticipated that it's going to be going down in comparison to last year. We still have our dollar amount set aside for our capital improvements, $1.725 million, a little bit of an increase with our Fund 80, $550,000 for that, with some of the new programs and services that we're offering. Just making sure that with that, as was included in a recent article in the newspaper, the last remaining dollars will be levied this year for our capital debt. And then we will not need to, pending the interest that it earns over the next couple of years, but it's not anticipated that we're going to be needing any future levy for debt on the existing 2012, 2009 and 2012 referendums that were retired several years early, and then the remainder going to support the general fund. So I just wanted to share that information. Like I said, we're also finalizing some of the actual publication. And when you see it in the newspaper on the 16th, it's about five inches wide and about 12 inches tall, and it goes over all the required statute-driven financial information, last year's unaudited information, the prior year's audited, and then this year's preliminary budget, again, that will be brought forward on the 26th. Happy to answer any questions. We know that the levy is going to go down. Statewide, I think property values are going up by about 14%, and we're right in the mix there. So we're going to see another $850 million of increased property value. It's not disaggregated based on how much growth that is versus reassessments there. But that will then, as we know right now, we've been holding the mill rate flat at $7.97, we know that that will decrease as well. As the levy is going down, property values are going up. So we need that final calculation. Any questions that you have on this information?
So I don't know that most taxpayers would be disappointed by that news. That being said, let's just talk about options, because we've heard a lot about capital funding for capital projects. Just hypothetically, if we said, well, can we maybe make the levy go down a little bit, but set something aside for additional money for capital projects that we don't have to borrow, just out of curiosity, is that something that is achievable? Or is it something that by regulation, no, there's no room for that?
Yeah, so through state statutes, and it seems like a great option because many of us do that in our own personal lives. Hey, let's start saving for a car so we can have a down payment, or making sure that we have that 10%, 20% down on a house. We don't have that option to start levying additional dollars for a future project. So that would be considered inside the revenue limit, and we have revenue limit authorities. Tech colleges do, cities don't, other municipalities don't. So we don't have that option to be able to do that. So it's a great idea. I wish we did in some respects, because it would be, in my opinion, some kind of fiscal responsibility to say, here is the plan, let's try to flatten this out, but we don't have that option.
So it would take a community-approved project really to change that?
That is correct.
Okay, just set the stage. Like I said, I don't think taxpayers are overly upset about the idea of lower overall levy. Just wanted to be sure, because I think there's also common criticism also around, oh my gosh, you should be saving up for capital projects. And it sounds like that specific avenue is not possible.
Correct. We would need that authority from the communities to do that.
The other question that I have is, and this is just a matter of timing, because we have this budget hearing, and there's a time zone within which we must have that budget hearing, correct?
Correct.
And yet, we're not getting information from DPI until later.
Yep, correct. And that's one of my parting messages is, this information, though we need to bring this forward, it has to go in the newspaper, it is still subject to change. So based on our final property values, we have an estimate right now from Baird, our financial advisor, they give all of their customers an estimate, but that's subject to change when we receive the final property value information from the Department of Revenue on Friday, the 14th. Typically, it's the 15th, which is a Saturday. We'll have our final third Friday pupil count that will be finalized right around that middle of October. And again, setting all that final information by the October 24th, budget hearing when the final budget, the mill rate and the levy will be set. But state statute, May 15th through October 28th or October 30th is when the annual budget hearing, annual meeting has to take place by statute. Some districts do it as early as May and June. A lot of districts will wait until either the end of August or into September, once families are re-engaged. In some senses, it's a nice transparency to say you're not hiding anything over the course of summer when people have different priorities and they're elsewhere. I don't know, Superintendent Wimmer, if you've seen other variances from that.
Generally, you would see usually an August timeline, but again, I think our history of waiting till students and families have returned, I think that leads us right into the timeline to hit what we need to.
Thanks. Mr. Sarno, is that your presentation? Just, I don't want to cut you off either.
That is. I'm making sure that we addressed any questions that we had. Thank you for your time there.
All right, absolutely. Thank you for your presentation. We're going to flow right in then to the next item, which is passenger vehicle purchase.
Absolutely, thank you. One of the things that Superintendent Wimmer indicated, and this is not a problem that's crept up on us, but the shortage of drivers, and I will reiterate for a second time, if anybody has any interest, it's a fairly smooth process that RightWay is established with getting people licensed with that bus driver certification. But in the meantime, we have developed a small fleet of vehicles. Generally, in the past three years, it's been 10 passenger vehicles through Ewald. I think they've had the state price that's bid out every year, but 10 passenger vehicles, ridiculous price of around $28,000 for those. So it's the driver plus nine passengers. It suits a lot of our teams, especially when we don't need a full bus. But unfortunately, an order that was attempted to be placed over a year and a half ago, we were recently given notice by Ewald that Ford is no longer making the 10-passenger vehicles. I believe, and I think I may have included in the write-up, there are no other manufacturers. I believe Mercedes is making one. I can't imagine what those cost. Maybe I should have looked that up for tonight just to compare. But the other option that we have at this point in time are seven-passenger minivans, again, state pricing through Ewald, but a little bit more expensive, $38,000 per vehicle, per board policy, $672 that was approved this past spring. I wanted to bring this forward because the three vehicles, as is proposed for discussion this evening, anticipated to bring forward for action at a subsequent meeting, would exceed $100,000. Where it is budgeted, the final budget is not approved. Again, wanted to just make sure that we had all of our bases covered with following that board policy. The window doesn't open until October 5th. That is when we cut our last purchase order because we had to wait a year ago until that window opened up where these vehicles can be ordered. I've been told, and I was told last year, but I have a little bit more confidence with the minivans, because they are manufacturing those on a regular basis. But those would be anticipated to arrive prior to spring sports. So again, allows us the flexibility. We have been renting vehicles. The same van that we would be purchasing costs $65 a day last year during the spring when we have a heavier use or a heavier need of these vehicles. We did rent several vehicles at $1,300 per month. So this is about half of that cost excluding maintenance of the vehicles. But it just provides us some flexibility during the day because we don't need a CDL licensed driver to be utilizing the vehicles.
Questions?
Makes sense.
Melanie?
I was just going to ask if you had looked into purchasing used vehicles, or even certified used, which generally are less likely to have issues, and there's some more warranty coverage on those?
Yeah, I would love to see if we can't find some used 10-passenger vans. In fact, as I see them on the road, I've been trying to jot down some names, and I call them and say, hey, if you guys want to get rid of those, please give us a call first. Nobody's been interested. The used car market right now is much more expensive. Historically, what the plan was is with those 10-passenger vehicles, we can drive them for about three years and sell them for just about the same amount of money that we purchased them. So you can keep cycling through. With the, I think with the minivans, it's still a very, very competitive price. It's still cheaper than any of us can go to the dealership and buy them for. But so used vehicles right now, I think, are just as expensive as a brand-new vehicle. So I think that is one of the things that we need to consider. So it's a great question. Thank you, Melanie.
All right, as this is a discussion item, this will come back for potential action at the next meeting, correct?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see then. Oh, next item is Policy 381, Controversial Issues and Corresponding Administrative Rule. And actually, I think the next three agenda items, Mr. Donaldson, we brought up at a request that you had after the last meeting. And I know I turned to Superintendent Wimmer and said, Superintendent Wimmer, let's get these...
Sure, I'll kick us off.
Let's handle these. So maybe you can kick us off on this one.
I will. So in looking at that first item, it's a discussion item, Policy 381, Controversial Issues and the Corresponding Administrative Rule. So generally, all policy is taken care of through the policy committee. This is one of those policies, for those of us who are on that, that's Joel, John, and Chris Weigert, all of you are on that policy committee. The 300 series is around instruction. This policy also went to the curriculum committee, where Tony and Melanie were able to discuss it as well. So I think in looking at this piece, this was an opportunity where Mr. Donaldson, he can certainly, I'll kick it over to him, but seeking full board input and discussion on this item. So then, anything contributions that the board members can make, as we were on that last stretch of policies for the 300 series, it feels like we've been in them forever, this will be in that. So just seeking feedback, so then our policy committee can respond and react to that feedback, so.
Sure. So I just wanted to bring this up because of stuff I've seen in the classrooms during walkarounds and any other time I've been in the schools. Policy 381 states, on both a planned and unplanned basis, the education process sometimes encounters topics that are considered controversial, such as when a topic, point one, can reasonably be expected to make individuals in class or other group feel uncomfortable, distressed, or even threatened. Point two, tends to elicit strong emotional reactions. Three, challenges a person's assumptions or personal beliefs. Four, creates or reveals real or perceived vision based on differing beliefs, values, life experience, or point of view. Five, presents problems over which there is significant and often even emotional disagreement regarding the appropriate solution and/or may cause some parents or guardians to question the school's role in addressing the topics with their children, and the potential for eliciting such a reaction is reasonably foreseeable. Just with those five topics, and you can continue on with the rest of the policy, and I would encourage that we send a copy to our teachers, staff, whatever, whoever you think it's necessary for. I do think it's inappropriate for BLM or pride flag to be displayed on public property or in school property. You can go on to continue to read through, and there's other policies and part of the policies that speak about using these schools' property for personal uses and stuff like that. So I do believe that we are not following these policies in our classrooms right now. And not everyone's beliefs are displayed with those. It could challenge other kids' beliefs, make them upset at seeing them, and would be no different than somebody wanting to put a different political flag in their rooms. So.
All right. Any other input for the policy committee before we take a look at that policy? Melanie?
I just wanted to ask, so it does state that sensitive matters dealing with race, sexuality, religion, politics, social violence, or recent tragedy could be some controversial topics that we might encounter. I think obviously the BLM deals with race, and it is somewhat political, whether everybody wants to admit that or not. And the same thing with the sexuality with the BLM. I mean, with religion, you wouldn't want to see people hanging crosses in their classroom. I'm sure there would be people that would be offended by that as well. Is there a way, I mean, I think there should be a way that we keep all of those things out of the classroom. They shouldn't be displayed at all. out of the classroom, they shouldn't be displayed at all. And then how do we, like even sometimes, some of these topics are, may not be directly taught, but they could be implied, you know, like maybe you're reading a storybook to kids, and there's some pictures of, you know, different like sexualities or religions present in the children's book, whether it states it or not. I feel like that's something that should be, you know, parents should be letting know that ahead of time, because it might not align with their family's values, and that might be something they'd want to discuss with their kids at home on their own, and not, you know, having the teachers present that, so.
Other input for the?
I'd just like to see teachers or, you know, and staff letting parents know ahead of time on those items.
Other input? Kurt, did you have something? No?
Well.
I don't want to force you, I thought you were reaching for your microphone.
And I think I'm correct in commenting on, we had a lot of speakers tonight on our dress code and how that affects their sexuality. Here's my take on this and what we are as, we're one community, we're one school district, we're a public school district. And I think that's the big thing, we're a public school district. I sent my kids to public school districts so they could be part of a student population that is rich, poor, different religions, different races, different everything, and taught a public education. I made that decision instead of private. Still, private schools, there's a big need for them, but this is a public school district. So my opinion on that, we have to be inclusive of everyone attending this public school district. There are different ideas on how they're dressing, there's different ideas of what T-shirts they wear, there's different ideas on what their views that they're developing are, but to me, the student is going to be a student, and we need to be inclusive of all our students, and inclusive to hearing them talk about the dress code. Regarding professionally, on how we promote, I think our teachers do a generally great job on staying neutral and presenting all the facts in our education system. So yes, you can talk about things that we did that were wrong, like a privilege test, which is probably now six, seven, eight years ago. Yes, we need to look at those things and correct those things, but to me, I think we're going a little too far on the pendulum, that's my, on our dress code policy enforcing and what we're doing, we're trying to not be inclusive of everyone attending this public school. So that's my feedback on that policy.
So my whole thing is, is you're inclusive to the 10%, but to some franchising, 90% of the students then, by adding these things to the walls and everything else, and you're not allowing, let's say, let's say somebody wants to put a giant Jesus poster and a cross and make their room a shrine, that's not allowed. Why is it, why is it freedom of speech for only the right, for only the one side, or only because you support this? If you like this, you don't get that freedom of speech in our classrooms, so.
Yeah, my opinion, I don't think I said that.
Point, did he put?
And you can't, and I'm not saying we can control anything the students do, that's fine, they can do what they want, they can wear what they want, you know, pride flags on their backs if they want, no one's going to say anything to them, that's a completely different thing, that's them expressing themselves, but when it comes to our teachers and, you know, kind of forcing it in other kids that maybe don't want to see it in the classrooms, that's where I see the problem. I don't, I'm not talking about the students one bit on what they're doing, because you can't control them, that's their own person.
I haven't seen that in our district, to the level that it would require a policy.
We already have a policy, though.
I guess that was my question, though, if I may. You're referencing that it's being shown in classrooms, I guess I'd like to know which classrooms and how many. I mean, I've walked the school as well quite often, and I can't say that I've ever seen it. So I mean, if there's a particular room that it's being shown in, without mentioning names, obviously, I guess I'd like to know that, because oftentimes, you know, rumors start and things get said that aren't necessarily true, or maybe it's perceived as one thing and it's really another. So I guess I'd like some actual examples. Where is this happening? What classrooms have you seen it that it's such a problem? And maybe that's back to the superintendent. I would be hard-pressed to think that an administrator walks into a room, and as you stated, the giant Jesus poster would be flying, they would say something. So I would be hard-pressed to think that administrators, if they're seeing this, aren't saying something, but perhaps I'm wrong if you've seen it somewhere else, so.
I have, and I've had reports.
Do you have pictures of such things?
I can take you right to a room probably tomorrow.
I would love, I think you should certainly talk to the superintendent and give her the room number, so we can address it immediately.
Sounds good, absolutely.
So when we talk about this being reviewed by the policy committee, I think obviously that's the appropriate procedure, and it's always good to take a look at policies to see, all right, you know, the words that were chosen in the past and situations that we're dealing with in the present. And so, you know, it'll be, it'll be an interesting, it'll be an interesting review, because we need to, we need to pick our words carefully. You know, one of the things I noted was controversial topic, such as when a topic challenges a person's assumptions or personal beliefs. And I was thinking, goodness, if you have a student who says, well, I personally believe the moon is made of green cheese, and my science teacher, how dare they, they said that it's, you know, it's not made of cheese, and that just challenged my personal belief or assumption, I don't think that's what this policy is designed for. We need to be careful, because those words, you know, can cross borders. And so that's why it's good to take a look at the existing language that we have and the current, you know, current examples, and we'll need to pick, we'll need to pick words carefully. So, so look forward to the review.
I'll just add, if we don't think this is a problem and that we don't have this stuff in the classrooms, I have like 30 emails from teachers and people fighting to keep it, so.
Okay, very well. I think, other input for the, for the policy committee? All right. We'll consider that item, that was a discussion item, so we'll move then to action items. So first action item, observance of national prisoners of war, POW, as well as missing in action, MIA recognition day, with flying of corresponding flag. And Superintendent Wimmer, why don't you kick that one off, too?
Yeah, I'm happy to kick that off. So the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has a series of observance days. POW MIA Day is one of those specialized observance days in, and just giving Board Member, Mr. Donaldson, credit, you know, as a veteran and understanding, the work that we do to talk about kids as that observance day, and we're talking about and sharing ideas how we could do better in our communications, talking about how is that handled in schools, and how to recognize, and how to show a community of veterans that we support them. We talked about the symbolism of that flag, those pieces, but this is actual, just on the day of recognition, which falls on that Friday, to fly those flags to show that. So as you're kind of in that teaching moment, having that, we have nine different flag poles outside of our different facilities, those pieces, we could certainly accomplish that in the budget. I did a little background in preparation, so when you think about things, does it align with practice, policy, and do we have room in the budget to do that? So for the flags and the accompanying hardware, we certainly could make that, again, just in that discussion around flags, we have a flag policy. So again, I needed to check and make sure that my interpretation is accurate. I don't see anything in the language that precludes me from doing that, but that was not an item I felt comfortable and authorized to fly an additional flag without board conversation and action on that piece. So we are poised and ready to do that. Mr. Donaldson, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was just reached out to by a veteran organization and asked if we could fly them, or if we did, which sparked conversation that I started with John. So it does seem that we should, we do recognize them in the classrooms and then inside, but that's, I think, as far as it went, so.
I personally think it's a great gesture, so I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of flying the POW MIA flags as presented.
And I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase and flying of the POW MIA flags as presented. Any additional comments or final discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Ongert.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly in favor of flying the POW MIA flag honoring, you know, prisoners of war and veterans. Just curious, though, on Gay Pride Day, are we going to be flying gay pride flags if there's an LGBTQ type organization that asks us to do so? Or on National Law Enforcement Day, are we going to fly the Thin Blue Line flag? Or on International Firefighters Day, are we going to fly, you know, the, I don't know what it's called, maybe it's called the Thin Red Flag? I guess, where does it end? Are our flag poles now going to be used as a mechanism for any type of, you call it free speech? I mean, if the Packers win, are we going to fly a Packer flag the day after Packer games? I just, I'm curious on if gay pride, Black Lives Matter-type insignias or flags are not going to be allowed in schools. I mean, the irony just is baffling to me that now we're going to be flying a different flag, you know, on our flag poles, you know, as a form of, you know, recognition for veterans, which again, I agree with, I support our veterans and our law enforcement, our firefighters, and also our LGBTQ community, so where does this end?
Superintendent?
So I further recommended, just so again, we're not opening ourselves up to multiple requests from competing organizations, and we would be viewed as discriminatory in any way, to put then that flag policy. Again, while there's nothing in there that occurs that is in conflict with this at all, just to revisit that in an upcoming policy committee, to make sure that it appropriately opens and closes the door, so that I'm not subject to repeated requests for those things, to make sure we're covered legally.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Ongert, you bring up a, you bring up a good point. Originally, I looked at the flag policy, and it said, we'll fly the United States flag, and I thought, uh-oh, you know, maybe we're, maybe we're bending a rule here. What persuaded me was the state of Wisconsin identifying this specific day as an observance day. So I think it would be a good idea to take a look at the policy and perhaps craft it and say, and I'm making this up, something like, we will, on those flag poles, we will only fly the United States flag, the state of Wisconsin flag, and any flag for any officially specifically identified public school observance day per the state of Wisconsin, something like that. I think we need to take a look at that wording, because I think that's a good idea, and, Mr. Ongert, I hope that, you know, might address your concern.
Yeah, it does, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the observance day is September 16th, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, which is next week. And I don't know if we have the flags purchased, or if we're ready to do it as early as next week. I would argue we have to change the policy before we do this, and I apologize, Mr. Donaldson, I think this is a great recognition, but I personally think it probably needs to wait a year until we change the policy, otherwise, we could be in violation of our policy. And, you know, Cinco de Mayo is going to be here before you know it, we might have the Hispanic community asking us to fly, you know, the Mexican flag on Cinco de Mayo, that sort of thing. And so I like flying this flag, I have nothing against that, in fact, I think City Hall flies the flag year-round, but I don't want to be in violation of the policy, and I think we need to go back to policy and revisit the policy before actually flying the flag.
Other thoughts?
Superintendent, can you answer that question for me? Are we ready, do we have flags purchased, and can we do this as early as, you know, four days from now?
I did not purchase.
Three days from now.
Yeah, I did not purchase without authorization, but I've made inquiries to make sure that they were on hand, ready to go, based on board action.
I just have a comment. To me, it's the right thing to do, we fly a POW flag at my work. It's the right thing to do. I can't believe anybody that's part of this country would not represent that flag, it's a non-controversial issue to me, I don't see why we wouldn't do it. That's my comments.
I guess I would ask Superintendent and Mr. Swigert, do you think that we are breaking the policy by flying this? I mean, I don't know, I read the policy, I guess I didn't think we were at all, so I don't see us being in any violation, but I'm certainly not an attorney.
Well, let's, let's.
I appreciate, Nancy, I appreciate the question, thank you.
Yep, so, so let's dissect this together. I think it's just really encapsulated in the first sentence, which is, excuse me, each school shall display the flag of the United States in each classroom or from a flagstaff on each school ground during the school hours of each school day. So one way to read that is, well, it's got to be on the flagstaff. Another way I suppose to read it is, it says, it will display the flag of the United States in each classroom or from a flagstaff.
I've also, to me, we've also almost set precedence here by me bringing this request forward to the board for formal review and action. So if I were to receive another competing request, that would have to be brought forward in the same way, the board would have to take action on that, again, limiting our exposure to that. So I feel comfortable in that, Mr. Ongert.
I think that, that's a great point, and I, with that being said, I'm 100% in favor. Thank you for that.
Appreciate the additional discussion. Any other final thoughts? We have a motion and second on the floor. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Schmidt is absent, Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigert votes yes. All right, that motion carries. Thank you for the good discussion, everyone, which takes us to, I think it's our last action item for tonight, and that's potential political advocacy by the board. And Superintendent Wimmer, since you've kicked off the first two, how about this one?
Sure. In looking at this request, again, Mr. Donaldson brought forward and talked about just widening that ability for, and phrase it as school officials, I'm sure we'll discuss a little bit more, allowing concealed carry. We were looking at neighboring districts who are taking up conversations like this, some resolutions that we come forward. Again, there's certain laws in place now, certain acts that we're in compliance with, so we talked about the avenue for political advocacy around that topic. Now with that said, I think there's a lot of common ground in every single person wanting our kids and our staff to be safe, and kind of how we do that. So I think there's a lot of pieces to unpack around, what does this mean, what could it mean? But again, we would have to be engaging in political advocacy. I'm here to help navigate that conversation around what avenues are open to us, there's certainly through WASB and resolutions and things of that nature, their stance has been no, you see local, again, always advocating for local control, local school boards kind of bringing this up, bringing this forward, to determine what is their path, what is their next step. So I think I'd turn that over to Mr. Donaldson again, and just talk about some of that exploration or ideas that you want to share.
Okay. So obviously, we've all seen the school shootings in recent years, and, you know, they, unfortunately, they seem to get worse and worse as it goes by. Parkdale shooting in Florida, the resource officer left the school, stayed outside during the shooting, which caused 17 deaths and 17 injured. Uvalde, the officer, the officers waited outside for body armor as staff members could have prevented the 21 lost lives if they were armed. In both these situations, a well-armed staff, well-trained staff, and willing staff, obviously, we're not saying everybody has to do this, everybody wants, you know, anybody that's willing to participate or is able to is all worth, is all that I'm bringing forward. 89% of shootings occur in gun-free zones, so a sticker on the side of the door.
Everyone else has left the call.
Uh-oh. Hopefully you will dial back. Please continue on.
A sticker on the window that says this is a gun-free zone does nothing. I mean, and I hear, I hear lots of people talk about the, you know, who's going to be liable if something happens? Well, who's going to be liable if you don't have a weapon and you can't, you can't, you can't protect yourself? The school is anyways. If there's a school shooting, the school and the facilities are liable for that school shooting anyways. So the liability is still there, no matter what. I hear, I hear people say, you know, adding a gun doesn't, doesn't add protection. I beg to differ. How many, how many mass shootings have happened in a fire, in a police department? I can't, I can't think of any. And to think that, that adding a deterrent into our schools is a bad thing, then I would, I would challenge a removal of every fire suppression system in our school system and just rely on the, on the fire department to come and save us when we need it, because that's what we're essentially doing, that you're relying on someone else. Because that's what we're essentially doing, that you're relying on someone else to come protect you when you could be the first line of defense or those people willing to be a first line of defense to protect themselves and the students that they have under them. Other things I would like to bring up is target hardening. Target hardening the spaces, you know, remove easily hiding, easy hiding places, well-placed security, if that's the avenue we want to go to. Obviously, we do the door locks, you know, gun detectors, something like that in order to deter any future threats. Right now, we do not have adequate security across our school system. I mean, I think we have, I think Ms. Wimmer said, four, five? Four officers that rotate through our school. That is not enough. You know, law-abiding citizens are the only ones that are going to obey the signs. I'm sorry, but that's the truth of it. Gun-free zones, only putting a target on the building that they're labeled as.
I think to speak to advocacy, some of the pieces that I see districts really talk about are advocating for, and this was present in the Germantown, which was, I think, the most recent district, was around mental health, was around the concept of funding, too. Mr. Donaldson's brought up a couple of key points. When you talk about, you talked about detectors being there for others, you talked about additional security or those pieces. A lot of it is advocacy around funding for those mechanisms at that state level so that districts aren't bearing different expenses in that as well. So I think that, kind of talking about some of those pieces or advocacy around funding to support school safety bears a good conversation, too, with the board. So if we could hear thoughts on those pieces, that would be helpful.
Just procedurally, Superintendent, I was looking to see if we actually even had a board policy on advocacy, but I couldn't find one.
We do not. There's a lot of times where we're advocating for public schools funding, talking with legislatures, talking about different things. When you see a board, no board member, the policies that apply here would be that no board member is authorized to speak on behalf of the board in a singular fashion. So that's what needs to come forward if you want to make a statement as a board. That's something that should be discussed. And I know I put the piece tonight around kind of that advocacy around those pieces so we could have that discussion, and it's listed as an action item so that our community, anything that were discussed, even if this board should say, Ms. Wimmer, I want you to go explore who has this, do that, come up with that, show us drafts of these things, if you're directing me to do something, that action is really transparent and public so that our board is covered in, kind of, if you were to ask even me to take some action or do some digging, that you feel confident that it's been put on the agenda in an appropriate manner for that.
Can I see?
Question for you regarding some of the commentary that goes back to the budget. So, Mr. Sarno, I think Chris had asked about, hey, you know, can we save up for a rainy day? So I would, I have asked this question before at other meetings about advocacy, and, you know, what will it take to get the state to lift some of the levy limits and some of those things so that we can actually accomplish some of these things within our own budget? So I 100% support some of Mr. Donaldson's comments. We absolutely need more officers, 100% agree with that. I am all about metal detectors. I am all about locking down doors and making sure that all doors are secure at all times. I am all about special mechanisms on doors that don't allow people to come into a classroom who aren't, you know, supposed to be in there, et cetera. I'm all about all of those things. I want to see some advocacy, though, for some of these levy limits to be lifted so that we can actually accomplish some of these things as a district. And I do pay taxes in this community, and I live here for a reason, and I don't have a problem if my taxes get raised if it means our students are safe. So that's where I don't have a problem with raising taxes, but we can't legally do it with the way the state has tied our hands in the last, I don't know when that limit stuff went in, I think it was in the 90s sometime, but whatever, I don't know the exact date, but you can look that up. So I'm about that type of advocacy 100% because our hands are tied at this point. We know that our biggest expenses are teachers, and we need teachers. That is not to say that we do not need teachers, but we can't take care of some of these other things because our hands are so tied. And there's no one in this room or outside or watching this TV who's going to say, oh gee, let's put 40 kids in a classroom so that we can accomplish some of these things. Nobody wants to give everything up, anything up, but everybody wants something for students. Well, you can't get there unless we can raise some type of levy limit or raise our budget.
So I heard quite a few things to delve into advocacy. There was pieces around just flexibility with our budget and kind of some of the rules that we're having to follow, that this might be an exception area to advocate for that. Then, in addition to budget and flexibility, there was the concept of additional officers, metal detectors. I would call these items, in addition to kind of hardening the target, the securing the envelope of the building, alarms on doors, increased video that people can have access to. Any discussion from board members around looking into those pieces or crafting something around those?
So, Mr. Donaldson, I think there's appeal to the argument that you make. I think we need to look at it kind of in two layers. The first one is the advocacy layer, the other is the layer around the school safety issue. And from an advocacy perspective, I think, all right, if we're going to put forward this resolution, we're saying to legislators that, yes, our community supports this. And I have to admit, based on the varying feedback that I've gotten over the last several days, weeks even, I don't know that we're there, and I don't know that I have the comfort to represent in a resolution that I believe that our community supports this. I just think this is too premature at this point. So I guess I have a fundamental question about that. We can get to the school safety issue later, but I just wanted to mention that and look for other thoughts. You know, I think the other, I think the other point is, from an advocacy perspective, our state legislators have always been super approachable. And I think about, is it better for, you know, a board of seven people to say, our community supports it? Or is it better for the individuals who feel in favor of this, or not in favor of this, to approach our legislators by the hundreds or maybe the thousands? I think that's much more instructive, and so I'm not sure that there's some huge need that is met or lost by not doing this particular advocacy. You know, I struggle with it because it's not clear-cut, and I don't want necessarily then to represent to our legislators, oh yeah, the community's in support of it, because at this point, I don't know.
I think, I think the verbiage on how this was represented may have been a little off on helping people understand what we were actually speaking to tonight, and you only heard from one side. So I kind of disagree, but I hear what you're saying because I got the same emails and I see where you're coming from, but, you know, you're a lawyer, there's a Second Amendment, and I think, you know, allowing this is part of, is part of, is part of the freedoms of this country. And that's, you know, I'm a two-way supporter, and I would fully support anyone that is interested in protecting themselves and the livelihoods of those around them, like myself, and I've had to almost do a couple of times. And without, you know, without that, without that protection or without that, you know, what would have maybe happened? Who knows?
Well, and I thought we heard actually some folks from both sides tonight, but what I, I think, I think what you say kind of proves my case, which is, you feel strongly about this. I think you, there's no problem with you advocating individually to legislators about that. There's nothing here that we're saying that would absolutely stop that. The question is whether, for me, I'd be, I'm willing to make a motion or approve a resolution that says, our community supports this, and I just don't think we're there. That's my, that's my point.
I think one piece, too, that it's, you know, the board never needs to take action. It's written as such so that you can with confidence. So hearing, you know, a variety of opinions, like you said, maybe not readiness tonight, maybe soliciting information, maybe some more pieces, you know, for me, I take away from a conversation, what were the common pieces, what was the board in support of? What is my next step or my direction from the board? So again, I go back to some of those pieces that were really common around funding flexibility, attention to safety and security of students, looking at pieces like officers, other mechanisms, you know, equipment, et cetera, that would be beneficial to schools to support safety and security. So again, I'm just going to kind of ask, like, is there anything that people aren't willing to, for me to look at, look into around those pieces? I can certainly, in our next, we have a state call coming up, just ask around who's exploring this to get a sense of who's doing that, who's had it legally vetted with all other superintendents and districts? Because I, you know, it's a conversation, but again, readiness or those pieces, I think, again, premature on anything, but I would need direction from the board to look at kind of the next steps.
I just wanted to share my thoughts on it as well. Certainly, I know lots of responsible gun owners, and the people that would be signing up to do that, you know, it would have to be obviously a voluntary thing. I think that those would be people that would feel comfortable with it. Obviously, you're not going to ask somebody who's not comfortable around guns to carry a gun, so it would be someone that, you know, that they're comfortable with that. I think there would need to be, like, a lot of training in place, and with being around children, like, you can't accidentally, like, leave it sitting on your desk or, you know, something like that. It would have to be really important that there was a lot of, you know, security around that. But I feel like if the right rules and regulations and such were in place to, you know, that there wouldn't be those accidents or people being careless, you know, then that's something I could support.
I think we, in kind of that conversation, we're vacillating between members of staff or school officials or different people, and I think that's a clear line. I would be remiss if I didn't express concerns about people in classrooms carrying or having access. A teacher could be overtaken by students, you know, and then I'd have a firearm in play in some way. I would be concerned about then, you know, do I have a standard weapon on site? How do everyone, you know, are people bringing their own? Who's taking care of all those pieces? So those are all things that need to be talked through if you're looking at that because someone's primary function is something else. They're a teacher. So looking at, if people think that this is a critical piece, board members could direct us right now to be engaging with law enforcement around expansion of the previously approved agreement between law enforcement. We can look at that. Or I think a deeper conversation around, who do we mean? Because everything that goes back to local control on this piece, and I think it's an important part, is, we would have to determine that. So how would I even disaggregate who that is, who would be allowed? So, you know, I think more tighter, that would need to be tighter. I think my easiest avenue right now is law enforcement. We already have that existing, it's, there's no barriers to that piece, but I think the concept of who that is should probably, you know, have consideration as well. Nothing that we need to discuss tonight, but I think we need to talk about that.
Yeah, and I'll just bring up, one of the speakers talked about the Arming Pilots Act, and I think that would be something you can definitely look to as far as a structure on training and how to do, you know, how to do the, how to do what we want to do with teachers, well, not, I guess, what we want to, what I want to. It doesn't seem like anybody really agrees, but that's fine.
Well, it's that point that I don't agree with. I love what you're saying about security, I agree with Nancy, I agree with our police officers, but I actually think, I knew somebody, I knew somebody who was a federal marshal that went through the program, I commend that program. That Ms. Tudor brought up, that was a good, good point. That is a great program, but I know what the person went through because I was interviewed, I was one of the persons interviewed, took me through a four-hour interview to actually assess their character, asked me multiple questions, the same time, kind of interrogated me, kind of drew me down, and then, and I had to answer. That's the amount of training they did for a federal marshal on a plane, and it has stopped the hijacking. I totally agree. I think there's a difference here on apples and oranges at the school. Teachers and pilots are generally ex-military, I'll give, not everyone, but probably 30%, 40% of them are all ex-military, so they have a great pool to pull from, but teachers are not ex-military for the most part. Some are, and I think more would be good for our teacher community, but to me, to take them through a 200 to 400-hour training program is not the right thing to do in my eyes because, one, it's taking 200 to 400 hours away. They could be taking a shop class and getting the new technique of how to teach auto shop or AP classes. I'd rather have them face-value our students. My opinion is, it's a great idea for our police officers to be expanded. Can there be undercover police officers in our school? And obviously, it's not a gun-free zone.
Disguise as teachers, maybe.
Yeah. You have that opinion, I have a little different, but it's obviously not a gun-free zone if we have cops carrying guns.
Right.
On there, so.
Well, I think that's a good point around what do our statements say on our buildings when, as you said, I have officers in there with firearms, you know, so, yeah, so I think probably looking at signage, like, okay, I can't declare that because.
Large officers considered exempt from that.
Yeah.
I think there's some.
Mm-hmm. Sorry. But, or even saying, we employ a school resource officer here, you know, that kind of signage, too, we could look at.
I think one of the themes I'm hearing here is, what can our, what can our police department offer? And maybe this is worthy of a board working session, I'm not sure. I'd like that to be explored. Melanie, I think you bring up some really, really good points. I agree with you. If we, if this would move forward, we want to set up our teachers for success on this, right? You know, those who are, those who are carrying guns. So the training, the retraining, do we have to buy them the ammunition? Do we have to buy a spot for them to keep the gun? Right, there's all that, and it's ongoing, right? Because we want to continue to, you know, have them freshen their, freshen their skills. And when I think about that, I think, well, if we took all those resources and put them into increased partnership with our police department, those folks do this as a specialty. The teachers would be doing this as a hobby, and we want specialty results, not necessarily hobby results. And I think that the other, the other part is that the police department has other techniques and pieces of equipment for non-lethal force, so they're equipped for a variety of different things, as opposed to, you know, firearms being kind of one-size-fits-all. So those are other questions that I have, but, you know, it's, it's an ongoing debate, and I'm open, I'm open to additional information. It's just, that's how I sit today.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I've had preliminary conversations around specifically this topic with local law enforcement, nothing in-depth, just needing to understand where the board wanted to go. But again, our chief wasn't able to come here tonight. We are served by the Village of Jackson, their police department, they're on-site daily at our school there. We're served by West Bend Police Department as first responders, as well as the four officers, and then outline service by the sheriffs. Interestingly, they had a council meeting tonight where the sheriffs were presenting their plan and potential referenda for, you know, increased capacity, and there's pieces of school service there. We haven't been apprised of kind of what that would or wouldn't mean, but again, that's why our law enforcement, they don't have anything specific, and I told them it would be premature as well. So I think coming to the table to really talk about the concepts of security, safety, that's something we're all committed to, and delving into those, we certainly have a lot of background that we could dig into and invite those agencies to a conversation.
You know, it's just a thought, but maybe we could have a board work session on school safety, just in general, because there are multiple parameters here, what Mr. Donaldson has brought up, what you've brought up.
In addition, there's also, we talk about liability, legality, all those people, getting some advisement from legal counsel around that piece because, again, I think the board, you know, we've got a history, we've made change legislatively before when we talk about Fund 46 and how that was this board that brought that forward and can do that. So I think what I'm hearing is, you know, just way more in-depth explore, so instead of just, we wish this, getting some real meat behind something in any. of just, we wish this, getting some real meat behind something in any kind of effort around advocacy is what I'm taking away from the board. Is that correct?
Well, I guess, I, again, just want to go back to the funding. No matter what you do, regardless of what proposal we look at here, there's dollars involved. If Mr. Donaldson's idea of the teachers being armed, you certainly can't expect those people to volunteer those type of hours, and I would want them to have some type of special pay or something. I'm hard-pressed to think that even in the airline incident, those pilots aren't compensated for that extra time that they're putting in and the extra responsibility. So there's a cost to all of it. And, you know, we are a very conservative community, and while sometimes I appreciate that, other times I think we bite our nose off to spite our face. And so if we want something, we're going to have to pay for it. And the way to figure out how to pay for it is to sit down with the legislators and come up with a plan that allows us to use some of those funds or to use it differently than what the law currently allows for. I can't believe we're the only district having this conversation. I'm sure many are. So at this point in time, I would love to see some type of action on your part with the other superintendents where you do have a conversation about what type of advocacy can you do at the state level to allow some of those restraints to be lifted for how our funds are used? I'm not suggesting that we can go out and buy party balloons for everybody and have a grand time with the funds, but I'm talking about security measures that are very clear and very well-stated. How can we set up a new fund or a Fund 87 or whatever, Andy, whatever number's not used, okay? You know, and have it specifically dedicated to safety and have it, you know, where it really spells out some of these things. I mean, what is safety to me might not be safety to someone else. So very clear-cut, you know, resource officers who are able to, you know, handle guns, who are well-prepared for that, that type of thing. I mean, that type of advocacy, I think, has been long overdue, quite honestly, by all the superintendents in the entire state. You need to put pressure on the state to make some changes that allow districts to do things with the funds that actually will help our budget and will help us on a local level.
And I just want to say, I'd be curious about other states that currently do allow the concealed carry. Like, what is their, what does their training look like? What are their requirements or who is allowed to carry in their district? Because I do agree, like, I mean, there is the Second Amendment, and that should be upheld also. So I just think there just needs to be, you know, some rules involved in safety measures that nobody's negligent with it.
Other thoughts? Superintendent, it looks like we've got some research questions headed your way.
Yeah, thank you. I've got some homework to walk away with. So I'll get that information. We can, I'll schedule updates, but then I would assume, like we said, maybe a time where we just dig in specifically on this. I'll invite law enforcement to the table as well as, you know, other representatives who have done this work, et cetera, so we can have that conversation. So I'll do a little digging in and make sure to provide updates to the full board on that. If there's any other feedback that board members have in between, our next meeting is our annual meeting, so that slate is full. If there's any other feedback in between now and then from our board, from our community, et cetera, I would encourage them to reach out, to let us know their thoughts so that we can continue. Again, there's nothing in play right now. This is simply a, please go forward and investigate, is the action that I'm taking.
Other thoughts?
And I just have one final. Knowing Chief Dearing and Sheriff Schulteis and their deep involvement with the community, haven't talked to him recently about this subject, but I assume you have. They're obviously not here advocating concealed carry in our classrooms by our teachers. So that would be a question I'm assuming would like answered by them as well. I'm assuming it's not a popular, but has anybody asked them that question?
Yes, I've talked with them. I've talked with the chief from Jackson, our chief, as well as sheriff, just talking about these pieces, that the questions come up and thoughts. Again, their initial response is a pathway for officers of the law to be more present in schools. You know, we have mechanisms for that. That wouldn't be, that's not a long play. That's a more immediate and understanding kind of our staffing of our current officers, and is that something that the board wants us to look at expanding immediately? Again, they're busy at council this evening, talking through some other pieces. And again, I think it would have been presumptive of me until the board had a conversation to figure out. So I'm sure, again, they're on standby to participate if we were to have a board work session and really dig into this topic or, you know, even a follow-up discussion item around safety, that they are more than happy to contribute through their roles.
I guess one of the questions I'd like you to ask both the sheriff and the chief would be, do they feel, what do they feel is the appropriate number of officers that should be at each school? And at what level do they feel they should be there? You know, sometimes, I know we have officers who are available in the evenings, because I've certainly seen them here at board meetings or at functions. You know, how many do they feel would be appropriate for a high school of our size? How many do they feel are appropriate? Do they feel that they need one at each elementary school? Do they feel a rotating one is enough? I know that in a prior life, we used a lot of retired sheriff's deputies, I think they called them reserve deputies or something of that nature, to come in and help with special events. So are those, you know, I don't know if there's still a large population of those people available or not. That would be a Sheriff Schulteis question. But, I mean, are those people available on a part-time basis to come in at certain hours or certain times or whatever? So, I mean, I would love to hear what they think are appropriate levels of officers at each location and even at large functions. You know, I would question, is one officer enough at the homecoming football game? My answer would be, heck, no. So, you know, but maybe Chief Dearing would think differently.
Yeah. No, we usually have multiples. I think that brings up a really good question. Some of the conversations that we've all had is around, you know, recruiting and retaining quality staff and looking at that. This is sometimes a niche market where you can create post-retirement opportunities where people still have some gas in the tank to give and looking at that. So while a pool for an officer entering the field and looking to commit the next 25 years of service, and that might be this big, I think the conversations I've had are around, this begs a whole different pool of people to come forward to serve under their umbrella, so. And one piece, we speak annually regarding the staffing and the placement of staffing. So we actually, this year shifted, and I've spoken to the officer-served, there's two full-time, one at each high school, and then the third comes in after shift start, after they visit Silverbrook, which was an addition, and then Officer Donat serves at Badger and then swings down in partnership to Silverbrook. But that was a shift that we made in attention to kind of seeing and wanting some more proactive work at Silverbrook. So we're responsive to those pieces as well, but I'll talk to if he had an ideal environment. What would that look like?
I'll just close this section, I guess, with some words from the wise Sheriff David Clark. He said, "Arm yourselves, you can't always rely on the police to be there for you."
So it sounds like the follow-up, then, is we've got a number of items you're taking a look at, and either it's a board work session or it'll show up on future agenda.
Yeah, for discussion, and that way I can bring that work forward, and then I'll make sure in whatever dates that we target that I can invite law enforcement representatives to the table as well.
Great, thank you. All right. Takes us to future agenda items in our board meeting calendar. We've got our curriculum committee meeting, September 20th, here at the Education Service Center at 8:00 a.m. Then on September 26th, at the West Bend High School Silver Lining Arts Center, we've got our budget hearing at 6:30 and the annual meeting immediately following at 7:00. And just a reminder to this group and to those who are watching, that's actually not a school board meeting, but a community meeting, and we invite everyone to attend. And then lastly, October 10th is our next regular board meeting. So thanks to everyone for attending a longer meeting today, but this is our only board meeting in the month of September, as we've got the budget hearing and the annual meeting coming up. So there were a number of items that we needed to get through, and we did, so I appreciate that very much. I think the other item, Superintendent, is we need to set a policy committee meeting as well. So we'll circulate that, and we should watch for that. All right, any questions on the calendar?
I just wanted to add a correction. The curriculum committee meeting is at 8:30 a.m.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that. Thank you for the clarification. All right. Any other questions or comments on the board meeting calendar? So we talked about a number of items for follow-up and communication. Are there any other items to bring up at this time? Hearing none. Our next agenda item is to adjourn, and so I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? I'll call the roll. Mr. Swegard votes yes. Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Tony Schmidt is absent. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
And Mr. Angert?
Yes, thank you for letting me call in, and good topics and conversation tonight. So you all have a great night.
Thank you, Joel. You as well. All right, we are stand adjourned. Good evening, everyone.